County Council Meeting is now in session. The Honorable Kristy Cox will give the oath of, I'm sorry, give the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for this opportunity to come together, and I thank you for the many freedoms that you've given us, and for the lives that have been sacrificed to guarantee those freedoms. I thank you for the opportunity to live in the best county that I know of to live in, and I thank you for all of the good leaders, the interested citizens, and for our dedicated staff who helped to get business conducted in York County. I pray that you be with us tonight as we do the people's business, that you give us wisdom, that you help us to remember the golden rule, and that you help us to look out for the best interests of the citizens of York County. And I ask for these many blessings in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is, actually, there's nobody for an oath? Okay, so we're gonna have appearances. I will ask this, if you've already talked to us about the location of the admin building, and I see three or four or five that already have, I'd appreciate if you kept it to five minutes, because there's only so many different ways you can say you want it downtown, but just 'cause we've heard from you two or three times, so let's kinda give room for the other people that may have not appeared before. But that being said, let's have an introduction for Charles Haynes, our new emergency management director. We're, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to introduce Mr. Chuck Haynes, who will begin working with us on Monday, March the 23rd. He is here this evening to meet the council and say a few words if you would allow him to do so, please.
Absolutely.
He has experience at the state level, as well as the local level, with emergency management, and we welcome to York County.
And do you go by Charles, or Chuck, or?
Chuck.
Chuck.
I don't have a prepared statement, other than I look forward to a long and uneventful career here in York County. If everyone's okay with that, then we'll be fine, but no.
I think we got the message.
Thank you for the opportunity to have me, and it's a homecoming for me. York County is what I consider home, and be able to move back and take over a program that I've admired from a distance for a long time. It means a lot to me and my family, so again, thank you, and I look forward to getting to work on the 23rd.
Well, we hope you serve as long as the previous director did. There you go. Thank you, sir.
Hey, everybody. I know you guys are sick of seeing me. We're going on, what, five years now? This is, I've kept it down to once a year, as everybody knows. If some of you haven't noticed, I haven't been here in a year, but we're on the anniversary of the three years of not giving Morning Star any more time, but we decided this year to do something different. As you can see, we still have the building, still standing. It's had a few more bricks falling off of it, but Morning Star's done their usual routine of not doing anything. They say they're gonna renovate a couple other buildings, and they haven't done that. They said they were gonna do something for the community with the castle that they took down. Didn't do anything with that. Let's see if this works. You have to do it? Okay, let's go to the next slide. So, as some of you may know, we did this whole shame Morning Star thing with fixing their pothole, and it was basically this giant pothole that filled half the road as access to Sugar Creek Elementary School. And ever since we did this, and it was seen by, I don't know, thirty-some countries, several thousand people, they've actually maintained their road. So, we had to have a little fun with this. So, I said, "Okay, what am I gonna do this year? Let's go really bold and have some fun with Morning Star at their expense." Let's go to the next slide. So, I decided, why not get a billboard? We all had Cabela's open, and got the electronic billboard right before Cabela's at the state line. So, as you might be able to see, that's, billboard's a picture of the tower, and it says, "Morning Star. It's Been Too Long. TareTheTowerDown.com," which is a link directly to the Facebook group. And we got, you know, a few thousand cars going past that every day, and hopefully it shames them enough that they will maybe do something, because the only way to get through to them is to shame them, it seems like. They haven't called me yet, they haven't threatened me yet. I'm waiting for that phone call from one of them, or something, but we'll see what happens. And there's two signs that are on the exact same billboard. Might as well go to the next one. Not the best picture, but I got it early this morning, and that one says, "It's Been Eleven Years," which is how long they've owned the sign. So, as you can see, we said it's the Tower of Terror, because why not just name it the Tower of Terror, with the bricks falling off and the animals living inside? You guys have done a good job in the last year. I mean, fought the case, at least got some of the things dismissed, but Morning Star is still trying to appeal, and hopefully we'll see where it goes. They seem to just keep appealing and trying to not do anything. As some of you may know, they're trying to take the entrance to the former water park and turn it into the Bob Jones Memorial. Ironically, since they put that sign up, that sign has actually become faded and cracked, and it looks just like the building that they're trying to renovate. So, I doubt that building's actually ever gonna get finished either. But that's about all I gotta say. As you know, I'll probably be here again next year on the 16th, 17th, 18th, as the anniversary comes around, but until then, I'll leave you guys alone, and thanks for your time.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. The next person's Ned Pryor. Yes, sir.
My family and I own Palmetto Self Storage.
And Ned, if you would, give your address.
Okay. My home address is 4351 Ivywood Drive in Rock Hill, but my son lives at 1337 East Alexander Love here in York, and he's part of my family, and I'm representing my family here today. Okay?
Okay.
My family and I own Palmetto Self Storage. We have been owners of the property for fourteen years. We were told by the City of York that Arrow Road would be either paved or closed within two years after we bought the property. Every year since we bought the property, we've been told that the road would be either closed that year, or something would be done about it, but nothing's happened. Last year, we were given a sheet with dates on it saying everything was in place, and the new Arrow Road, or the new road, would be built, and the old Arrow Road would be closed. And I know that all of you have probably seen that sheet that's got all these dates on it, and it says that the road would be completed, the construction would be done and be completed by 10:15 of this year. But as far as I know, and I look every day, no surveying has been done or anything else. And it's really been hard on my family because the money that we've lost. The, if this schedule is not true, I'd like to know this, do I have the right to close Arrow Road that goes across my property? I've talked to the police department about kids tearing up the property on the western side of my property, where Arrow Road goes through it, and they say, "No, no, I can't do anything." Well, it's just like it's, you know, the law's good for these people, but it's not good for me, or vice versa. If I can't do anything, then tell me why I'm paying all the taxes on it. Nobody else is paying any tax on that road but me, because it's my property. It has never been annexed or been taken from me and saying that I don't have to pay tax. I pay taxes on it every year, but no one else pays taxes on it. But they use that property. Trash is thrown out every day. I pick up anywhere from one five-gallon bucket to two five-gallon buckets full of trash off that road, just in front, just on my property line, every day. The dust that is generated on that road by the cars that run down it, they've got our house and such a, an office in such a fix, that I'm not sure that it can be cleaned. The gutters on our buildings, on the storage buildings, are so full of trash, or dirt and dust, every year, there's plants that grow up out of it, anywhere from twelve to twenty-four inches high. Last year, I paid a man $750 to help me get the dirt out of those things, because I was scared that we're gonna fall off, that doesn't got so heavy. And then I took my tractor, and we had to scoop up all that dirt and stuff that was in the gutters, and haul it off. Speeding motors run down through there, and they've run through our fence four times. Not one time has the City of York's police done anything about it. Dust has killed all the shrubbery that the city made me put out on Arrow Road. It's killed every bit of it, and I had to dig it up. There is no shrubs left, so we just have to do without that. But we have lost, and I can show you the figures on this, we have lost $452,600 in fourteen years in revenue because of that road. And we were told, you know, it's gonna be closed or paved within two years, but they haven't done anything. To give you an idea of what I'm talking about when I say how much money we've lost, those units, the ten-by-twenty units that's on that side toward Arrow Road, there's thirty of them, at $90 a month, it's $2,700 per year that we lose, because we can't rent those units. Would you wanna put your furniture or your belongings in a storage unit that's gonna get full of dirt and dust? You see, those units breathe over the doors. The wind, most of the time, comes from the southwest, and when people fly up and down that road, it's not gonna blow to the southwest, it's gonna blow the opposite way. Well, the opposite way is toward the storage units, so it just sucks all that dirt in over the doors. That is three hundred and, thirty-two, that's $32,400 per year, and in fourteen years, that's $453,600. That's quite a bit of money, isn't it? I believe I could pave that Blooming Road for that much. I used to do a little construction work and paving and that kinda stuff, so I know what it costs, and I know what's involved in it. And I'm just asking, what can be done? Am I getting a bunch of bull again about what's on this sheet right here, or is the county gonna do something about that road? All I'm asking is, close the blasted thing. It's cost me enough. And traffic on it has increased more right now than what was on Alexander Love when we built the first two buildings on that facility. And I'm not joking, 'cause I've sat right there and counted them before. On school days, in the mornings, I don't know why somebody hadn't got killed, they come flying down that road, they run right out in the road, they don't stop. I've even had the police to come over there and check it, because I don't want nobody to get killed there. But somebody's gonna get killed if something's not done pretty soon. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Ned. Appreciate it. Next person, Margaret Blackwell.
My name is Margaret Blackwell. I live at 6391 Baker Lane in Lake Wylie. Since two of you are new to the county council since I last spoke, I have to tell you that the county council chairman and I have the same wonderful last name, but we're not related. I will also tell you that because of our education, each of us can be addressed professionally as Dr. Blackwell, but neither can hang an M.D. after our name. I am here to speak to you tonight about locating the county administration building in downtown York near our current courthouse. There are seven reasons why I feel it's important to locate this building in downtown York. First, York is our beautiful historic county seat. I'll be to that in a minute. Therefore, all of the residents of the county should take pride in that fact and do all that is possible to keep York a vibrant, active city. Second, it is extremely important to have one location where county business is conducted, and logically, that should be adjacent to the county courthouse. Having locations spread around the county confuses citizens. Last week, a friend and I were going to a meeting at Planning and Development. Now, she's a lady who's really active in the county, and as we were driving down 49, she put on her blinker to turn right, to turn onto 49 to come on to York. And I said to her, "Where are you going?" She said, "To Planning and Development." I said, "Well, unless you know a new route that I don't know about, you need to go straight down 274." And she said, "Oh, yes, we're going to Rock Hill, aren't we?" She said, "I always think you need to go to York to conduct county business." Now, this is someone who is involved and goes to lots of meetings. Imagine how confusing this is to someone who just occasionally needs to take care of some kind of business with the county. I understand that even county councilmen have gone to the wrong place because of location confusion. Third, oftentimes, it's happened, hasn't it, Mr. Williams?
For me.
I didn't say it was for you, but it has happened. I'm not calling names. Oftentimes, people need to go more than one office, and for the convenience of all citizens, these offices need to be as close together as possible. Anyone doing business with York County should be able to park to the car and walk from office to office as needed. Today, I parked, I was able to walk to the voter registration office, I was able to walk to the treasurer's office, and I was able to walk to the county manager's office. Everybody needs to be able to do that when they're conducting business with the county. Fourth, you've invested a lot of money in the county courthouse, so let's do what's right, and put the new county administration building adjacent to the courthouse, not one and nine-tenths miles away. Fifth, land on the bypass is prime commercial property. It's not in the best interest of York County taxpayers to take that land off the tax rolls by using it for the county. Build Arrow Road. You've just heard Mr. Pryor, he needs that road built. That land will develop, and county coffers will increase. Six, please do not set yourself up as a competitor to private enterprise. I'm a strong proponent of governments only owning that which is essential to their operations. Let private enterprise develop, then you collect the taxes. We, the citizens of York County, own land around the courthouse, and please use it to meet the needs of the county. Seventh, we've heard, we've heard that traffic in York is a problem. I will differ with that. Traffic to and from downtown York makes no difference. I have some pictures that were taken this past week that I wanna show you. The first of these are three sets of pictures taken right out there at the intersection of Liberty and Congress Street, and I will show you traffic in downtown York at 8:15, 8:30, and 9 o'clock. Okay, there's 8:15 in one direction, another picture, another, and another. You can see how busy it is. Then let's look at 8:30. And again, at 9 o'clock. All from the same intersection. 9 o'clock traffic. Now, you can see that traffic's a problem during the hours when most people would be approaching that area on county business. Not a problem at all. The same traffic that goes one way in the morning comes back in the opposite direction later in the day. It may differ by a few cars, but it's not enough to cause a traffic jam. In contrast, I have some other pictures to show you where we do have a traffic problem in the county, and if you wanted to put the courthouse, the administration complex over there, I would say, "No, no, no." Now, I'm not as good a photographer as a person who took the York pictures, and this was early in the morning, and I was by myself, and y'all, I am not stepping out in that traffic on 49. But I would take a picture when that light changed, and I stayed out there thirty to forty-five minutes doing this. So, there, it's going one way, it's headed right across the Buster Boyd Bridge into Charlotte. And this is the next group that had to stop. And then, there's, and this time now, decided to get out and drive in it. So, I'm driving in the main traffic going to Charlotte, it's coming up on the left side of this picture, and there's more of them. And now, it's getting so bad that it's even in both directions, there's traffic. And there's more of them. Now, these may look the same, just 'cause they all have their headlights on, but this is all different groups, because I would only take the picture when the light changed. Now, remember I said everything that goes out one way's gonna come back in the afternoon? Here it is coming back in the afternoon. This is Bonham Road, right here, and we're trying to get out onto 49, and we're trying to make a left turn. Now, this traffic is backed up all the way to the CVS light up there. We only got to turn because some nice guy let us turn left. In fact, the guy in the right lane stopped, the guy in the center lane wasn't going to stop, but he suddenly realized, "Ooh, I better slap on my brakes and let these people through," and then he had the nerve to hurry me. Now, where did he think he was going? He didn't have five feet to move, you know? I could barely get my car through there. So, then, as we go on up 49, y'all, this is part of the backup. Now, this is, way up the top of the hill there is 160. So, we get to 160, and we turn. Now, way back up here is the traffic light at Shoat Circle. Now, I don't know how far the traffic jam went beyond that, but I know it was from Shoat Circle all the way to CVS in Lake Wylie, which is between four and five miles. Please don't put anything in that area, we don't need any more traffic. So, that is the part of the county that doesn't need traffic. I think it's abundantly clear from these pictures that the traffic problems in this county are not in York, and you know, I didn't get near 160, Michael, nor did I look at 274, nor I-77. That's where the traffic problems in this area are, this county are. Ladies and gentlemen, this is not a Republican-Democrat issue, this is not an East-West issue. This is about pride in our county seat, the desire to keep that area vibrant, and the need to centralize county offices. I even think Planning and Development should be brought back here. It is a county office, and it all needs to be located in the county seat. I do hope that I can count on you tonight to vote to keep county offices in one centralized location in downtown York. Thank you for your attention, your consideration given my request, and we appreciate all that you do to help make York County a great place for us to live. Thank you.
Ms. Gail Phelan? And Jane's past member that sat up here until she got smart.
And that's sort of the purpose of mine. I wanna talk a little bit about the legacy of leadership. I was fortunate on Friday to go to Winthrop and judge high school history projects, and they were based on leadership qualities, which you've all proven because you've been elected. And the second part was, what legacy do we leave behind? And I thought, "Wow, this is appropriate, it fits right in with my presentation." And I was asked to come and talk a little bit about what past councils have done that builds into this. And I did walking, I'm, everybody, my kids call me a streetwalker now, because I do walk around York all the time with my big dog, and I do wanna tell you a little bit about that, and so I'm doing a picture presentation, 344 East Jefferson Street, sorry. Okay, and this is the site that we're looking at and we're talking about, and you see the beautiful First Baptist Church on the left, and the property is there. And I'll try to not repeat things that were just previously brought out. Let me see. Okay, I think we're good. Okay, and again, she's already talked about it being our county seat, but I just wanted you to see a map that it is in the center, and for the people over in the Hickory Grove, Sharon's side, I mean, we all have a drive to come to the county seat, but by law, that is designated. And when I first got on council, I think it was Mr. Gene Clu who was leaving, and I had the honor to drive around a lady candidate for the county council position, and so I picked her up at the airport, and she wanted just a tour of our county. And I just wanna tell you a couple things about that drive. First of all, she told me in Sonoma, she was just amazed with our downtown, how beautiful it was. That was the one thing that stood out. And she said, "The biggest item on their budget was paint." And I said, "Paint?", and she said, "Yes, because of the graffiti." She said, "Our downtown is not alive, and we spend so much money painting," and of course, they have a lot of gangs. And then the second thing she was just hewing and hauling about was the trees, and I thought, "What is wrong with this lady?" I mean, she was just so excited about the trees in York County. Well, it's only in my later years that I've been able to travel out west, and you don't see trees, so we don't get to appreciate those. But now, as I look back, one of the greatest things that we started was the York County Forever Project, and I understand you guys are still doing it, too. And so, in 1998, we started York County Forever, and I just wanna remind you what the function of that is, not only to save our trees, our open space, our green space, I know we've built a lot of policy into that, but it also says to identify and promote the development and the preservation of historical resources, and that's what we're talking about in downtown York, and to encourage and promote tourism emphasizing the cultural and the historical resources in York County. And y'all are still committed to that, I believe, and we are, too, and over 9,000 acres have been preserved. But it also talks about here the charge, that we have this cherished way of life, and we are seeing it. We are seeing it vanished. When I take kids to Brattonsville, you know, one of the neatest things about it is, we walk down to Huck's Defeat, and the kids play in the woods. They don't play in woods anymore. We're seeing that vanish, and I think that's true with downtown York, too. We have these beautiful walking, you can go and get a little pamphlet and do your own walking tour in downtown York, and we're trying to preserve this unique character. And again, I've been blessed to travel a lot lately, and one of the things that, that is just so neat is to see downtowns that have been preserved, and you don't have to bring consultants in to see what's working. We have it working here. And then, again, the investments, just some of the buildings. I remembered this building here, the old York County Library. This was a post office, and we brought that, and we bought it, and it had a lot of asbestos in it, and this past Friday, one of the employees at the public library in Rock Hill told me the favorite one in the county was the one in York because of the old safe, and it just has such unique character. Last Saturday night after the meeting I spoke before, I walked by the McKelvey Building, and that sign was out there, "Sold-out Performance." They were doing a Christian music-type thing. And then across the street, the registration used to be, I don't know if y'all know, but it was the Chevrolet car digger ship, and now it's moved out, you know, to the Walmart area. And then you all have helped preserve the historical center, and then recently, more importantly, you helped us with our courthouse, so you're making the legacy continue, and we thank you for that. And I thank you also for last week, Ms. Plummer, who came here and wanted you to preserve her way of life, which was not putting the Dollar General in her neighborhood. And I do walk at night, too, and you can see some of the pretty scenery. And last week, your mayor was in York at one of the restaurants that I happen to be at, too, and we looked out, and we said, the mayor of Rock Hill, excuse me, and we said, "This looks like we're in downtown Charleston." It was just such a lovely scene downtown. So, this is what we're talking about preserving, and these are the beautiful homes and the churches that we have. And I am a walker, and I can walk downtown at night, at 9 o'clock, and feel very safe because we are preserving. And so, the question becomes here, do you look, and we're gonna see, we don't put it downtown? I do believe we will see more graffiti downtown, we will see more boarded up. I read in Rock Hill recently about this Knowledge Park, and if you don't get this commuter bus transit system between Winthrop and Knowledge Park, and I love what they've done to the Bleach Tree, but if you don't get it, you get blighted areas like this, and that's what will happen to our downtown, and I, too, made pictures also. And here's Clover, and then the textile industry closes, and they've had to do things on their own and spend money to try to revitalize downtown. And then here's Rock Hill, and you know what all's going on down there, and it's getting really happening downtown, but it's taken a lot of money and a lot of plans and a lot of consultants to get it to that point, because the roof went on, the roof went off, and now we've got all kind of development going on in downtown Rock Hill, and it's, Christmas is gorgeous now. And it's, uh, Christmas is gorgeous now. And so I put you up here, y'all, or up there. And the question becomes what's going to be the legacy? And are we going to keep York downtown a safe place? And I truly believe we'll be more like this if we don't make the decision to put that building where we're all talking about. And then the traffic studies, I'm not going over that again, but we do have a lot of traffic. You think at Manchester, that's, I mean, that's just almost a nightmare going over there now to try to shop because of the, the growth and the commercialism and things going on there. And then you think when we had the Knights Stadium and they tore it down recently and they moved the baseball stadium downtown Charlotte and they moved the Panther Stadium downtown Charlotte. And I'm saying, are they nuts because the traffic? But if you go downtown, you get into this festival feeling with game day and they've made it to be a plus to their downtown area. And I think we can continue to make ours a plus in the downtown area by the location of our building. And I don't know if you know, but the downtown crossroads are called Ferguson and there's a historical marker there too. But again, I say that you've got these roads going in all four directions, Hickory Grove, Smyrna, McConnell's, up toward Lake Wiley and toward Rock Hill. And we don't see that congestion that you see out toward the Walmart area, especially on Friday afternoons because the banks have moved that way, McDonald's has relocated and all of these other stores are just, you know, contributing to the urban sprawl that we're starting to experience here. And I pulled these pictures up here just to show you on Arrow Road. And I've talked to the mayor several times. He comes to my classes and he promises the kids they're going to get a Target in York. They're going to get Aldi's in York. But this, this is the road, the Target is the road that they're talking about. Arrow Road is where it may locate. And I just can't imagine a historical building, you know, and we're proud to have these things here. I'm not putting them down, but there's a place for everything. And a historical building, that's not the location. And, you know, we get into the, go back to the traffic thing too, but when we talk about a public building, you know, we're talking Monday through Friday with the traffic and very seldom, and I've lived in York, I come into town to pay my taxes at a county building, but we are paying online taxes now. We vote, uh, we can fill out our applications online now. And so so much stuff is being done online that the traffic's not there. I mean, we just need the support groups. I kept hearing last week about the EPA study and the creek. And so yesterday I went down on that property and I just want to show you that, sorry. But this right here looks more like a stormwater runoff. It was very stale, polluted, like water, it's very still. And if you go to the back of the property, it looks like it's probably floodplain anyway. This is what I think people are calling a creek. Now, the creeks I grew up in, you could swim in and play in, but this was more a stream to me and it did seem to have fresh water. But again, on the backside. And I say that you make that into a challenge if you want to really develop this property. We, um, when we started the Pennies for Progress, we dealt with wildflowers that were endangered everywhere. And we would joke and say during the night, we were going to get, go get some herbicide and get rid of those wildflowers so we could move on with progress. But of course, we didn't do that. And I remember too, a challenge was because of a tornado in North Carolina, I think it was a hurricane. But again, they saw a lot of the infrastructure killed. And so we came up with a way to get that water. We chunnled on the Catawba River and to get water between Rock Hill and Fort Mill to have a backup source so that those people would not lose their water supply in case we had a hurricane like had happened in the, um, North Carolina area. And I don't remember the name of that particular hurricane. But again, just some other points that I want to point out and finish up. But the Rock Hill York Convention Visitors Bureau, they've got a new big name now, but they have a page on marketing downtown York. And on that page, it says, "With a Strong Historical Core." And they also say their function is to promote and encourage cultural, historical. They're advertising it on our website. And then, again, the walking experience is great. And I challenge you that if we have employees in downtown during the daytime, if you come to downtown York on their lunch hours, they are walking in downtown. Much safer, a much more pleasant walk than going out to the, um, Walmart area to walk. And then even our York County Economic Development Board, uh, you know, I would just think they would have a stake in this too, wanting us to develop the commercial property, uh, as commercial property for tax purposes. And so again, and then, you know, we heard also last week, well, we won't support it unless it's on the Rock Hill side. And again, I say that we don't really come downtown a lot for services anymore. We're using them on the internet. We've moved up in the world here. But again, I take that and it's sort of like, um, you know, I used to hear, I had people that were on dirt roads and other council members would say, well, Jane, they moved on dirt roads and knowing it was a dirt road, so they shouldn't expect it to come their way. And I started to think about that with the whole county, with Hickory Grove, people complaining it's so far to get to. But again, you move there knowing where the county seat, the county services are. And so I just hate to see that if it's good for the county, that we all don't support it. And then I just remind you with my legacy here, that we have these wonderful buildings in Washington DC. I take my kids to see the new Martin Luther King Memorial. And here again, we can make our own legacy here by preserving the beautiful downtown that we have. And so not only your leadership, but I hope you'll take another step and consider what's at stake here and that we can continue to be part of this great legacy that we have here with downtown York. And even when they built the new high school, which I'm privileged to work there right now, this was our new seal and they had York, Hickory Grove and Jefferson. They have colors there and we, and they even did the halls that way to bring out the history of York Comprehensive High School. And growing up, I hated York and now I'm a resident of York. And the reason was because they were our big, um, rivalries. And guess what? They put me on a green hall, York Green Dragons. And so I felt like I'm, you know, a punishment or something, but I'm very proud of that school. And they've even tried to preserve the heritage too with trying to design the emblem. So here again, I just beg you to please use your leadership qualities and please continue the legacy that other councils have put in place. You've got a beautiful site over here and I hope you'll add to that site to add to our downtown to keep it safe. Thank you very much.
Next person's John Shiflett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. My father always told me when I appeared before important people, I should wear a tie and shine my shoes. I've got plenty of ties, but I'm about to run out of shoe polish after all these visits to you guys. But I appreciate your patience, uh, as we, many of us have expressed our deeply held convictions. And I will, Mr. Chairman, be very brief and touch on some things that, that, uh, I don't think, um, anyone else has said. Uh, I know that, uh, Mr. Shanahan emailed our city manager, Charles Helms, uh, this past week, asking him to respond about what tangible assistance the city of York could give. Uh, and I think that Mr. Helms responded that he certainly wasn't authorized to speak on behalf of council. And I want to clarify upfront that I'm not authorized to speak on behalf of council. We're, we're, uh, we have not met since that request was made. But I want to mention three things very briefly. The grants that we continue to talk about, and we've been successful in the past obtaining grants, uh, most of them come through Catawba and I think we've got a lot of support sitting up here, uh, on that particular body. Uh, but if grants come our way, then we're responsible for the match and sometimes it can be considerable. For example, a $500,000 grant, uh, could carry a $50,000 match from the city, which would come out of any reserves that we have. Uh, second, I'm very hopeful that city council will explore and consider additional ways that we could be tangibly helpful in some way, whether it's, uh, right here with the, the new building or with, uh, other ways that we could be of assistance financially. I do, uh, think you need to know that we do have a minimal fund balance. It's, uh, uh, there's some there, but it's, uh, it's not what you guys have, I can assure you. Finally, I would say in that regard, that I would, maybe this is the most important thing we can do, is that I would personally pledge my, um, strong intentions, and although I've heard other city leaders say the same, that if this decision is made in the way that we hope it will, that if we can come together and streamline as best we can the whole historical commission process and the permitting process and save a lot of trouble in that regard, then I feel sure that we would, uh, make every effort to, to streamline that process. And then finally, and this is the only time I'll repeat what I've said in the other nights, I do think that once, uh, this courthouse has begun to be renovated and the construction begins on the administrative building, the inertia that comes from that will, will be a considerable, have a considerable impact on the city of York. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, next person's Jim Bradford.
I'm Jim Bradford. I live at 12 Wright Avenue in York. Site two, uh, of the coming review and proposals, as you know, is on the corner of South Congress and West Jefferson. Uh, it's just on the other side of the asphalt parking lot. Site two is suitable from the standpoint of load-bearing soils and environmental issues. From the core studies of soil suitability, uh, done since the last council meeting by ESP, I think you've recently gotten copies, um, and, and I had access to the, of the copies. It appears that, uh, one of the core borings, HA1, which, which looks like it would be about the back wall of the proposed administrative building. Um, and HA2, which is about a hundred feet, uh, from what I can tell, I mean, to the rear of the proposed administrative building at that site, um, are essentially the same quality of soils as, um, as is, um, shown on the site and core samples examined by ESP at Arrow Road. The HA3 site, which was identified by ESP in their study, is actually in the beautiful valley, which is, is behind us and is right where the, it slopes down and, and gets low. And that's where they identified the water table that, uh, water was hit three feet when they drilled. Uh, they, I think incorrectly identified that site as the location, well, maybe not incorrectly, proposed road, um, that was in site plans that they had seen. A Cummings plan, site plan for, uh, site two does not show a road there. I believe that that is the road that has been discussed as a possible road that would extend, uh, through the valley and, and head out and intersect with White Rose Lane. And, uh, I mean, personally, I think it would be very unfortunate to build that road because I think that, that site would make a beautiful park, which would be a wonderful place for county employees to have lunch on a beautiful day like today, uh, if they brought their lunch with them. And for all the people of York and York, the city of York and the county of York to have a, a garden spot, a shady glen that they could go, uh, when they're, uh, in the area. Uh, but if it were, y'all, it, it is not, I don't think, um, on anybody's list and it's certainly not in the coming site plan. They examine that site. If, if you go that way, there may be some issues with regard to, um, you know, wetlands considerations, and I'll deal a little bit more with that. But as far as soil samples are concerned, I don't think there's anything in the ESP site that is a negative for downtown York. And there's no, uh, you know, extreme positive that comes out of their examination of the Arrow Road site. Now, we've heard that there was a problem with old gas stations and there was one right across the street. There was one where the parking lot is now. There had been monitoring wells there since at least 2004 that DEHEC put in and monitors. And, and it's, they, they bear the expense for putting them in and probably the prior owners might have, of those sites might have some financial responsibility. The county has none. If you choose to build on site two where there are several monitoring wells, then, uh, according to the report, then I made a FOIA request and I saw that David Larson had considered this issue and had been in touch with the DEHEC officials. And they say that as long as you let them know that you may have to move the monitoring wells to build your building, that they will work with you. They just don't want them destroyed because that would da- damage their sample data and all the rest. So they would move them, they'd be moved at their expense. And of course, there's no danger or problem from, from the, what little groundwater contamination there is from what I can understand. Uh, David Larson concluded in his remarks after talking with various people, that, that is believed that the problem will naturally attenuate, that over time, that that problem will go away. But of course, you're not going to use, you're not going to be drilling wells there for use and water in your building. You're going to get your water from the city of York and it gets its water from the city of Rock Hill. So you're not going to have any problem with, uh, groundwater pollution as part of your construction process or your, uh, use of water in the facility. Finally, uh, um, well, the, the other thing is environmentally, there's no problem with wetlands. If you should choose to put a road, and again, I don't recommend it, but if you should choose to put a road at some point through the valley, uh, you would be able to cross that stream if need be. And I think you'd probably have to cross it because it's a very steep slope on the northern side, uh, and you couldn't really get out that way without crossing the stream. But you can put up to 60 feet of culvert in that stream and put your road over it, from what I understand, without having to worry about wetlands mitigation. If you choose to do more than that, uh, you, you may or may not have to do wetlands mitigation, but because you could do the mitigation downstream relatively easily, it would not be an expensive process. Of course, you can buy mitigation credits on the open market if you need to, but again, not an expensive fix. And, and really not an issue that I, I think we're ever likely to face. The final thing is, there was a report from a former chairman of council that there was some settling issue, that, that maybe there were problems with settling now, but, but with this building, uh, which I, I guess the intimation was that there might be settling problem, problems on all the property here. First of all, this building was built on some fill, but it's got concrete piers and a concrete foundation. Uh, and talking with some former, uh, people who were involved with the building here, it's the most sound building in York County government. I mean, it is built like, like the rock of Gibraltar on a, on a s- foundation. There was some soil infiltration, but it's a problem that's been corrected by the new roof that was put on last year and by new gutters. Some of the soil, fine soils were leaking, leaching down under the, you know, under the slab. That problem has been corrected. But the building itself has never settled. It's been, like I say, like a rock. And of course, the site that we're talking about is essentially undisturbed down on this corner and it's never been a gully or it never had to have fill brought in, uh, to the extent that, that this building was. So I think for all these reasons, there's no environmental reason, there's no problem with settling and there's no wetlands problem. And in fact, the site is, uh, site number two is perfectly suitable for the administrative building, uh, that has been proposed for it. Thank you.
Next person is Steve McCray or his designated alternative. Oh, there you are.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman and Councilmen, my name is Steve McCray Jr. I do answer to the moniker of Bad Penny. And I live at Two Kings Mountain Street here in York. I'm, I'm going to keep this presentation under five minutes, so I'm going to read it and I apologize for that. First, I remind you that the coming estimates for the Arrow Road site and the option number two site showed only a slightly over $1.2 million differential. Both those estimates included a 10% contingency. Second, the $1.2 million differential for option two could be completely offset, completely offset by delaying the move of the registered deeds office and the finance offices to the new building for 10 years or less even. But still, including in the 83,500 square foot building, the space that eventually would be upfitted for those offices. In 2011 and 2012, the county spent for upfitting a loan of the two buildings at 18 West Liberty Street and 26 West Liberty Street, a total of $1,638,477. It stands to reason that the delayed move into the new building, as suggested, would save the county at least $1.2 million in present expenditures. Also, in doing so, the county would be in compliance with section 4-1-80 of the South Carolina Code, which requires those offices to be, quote, "at the courthouse," end of quote. Third, that building was obsolete 40 years ago and it still is. Third, that building was obsolete 40 years ago, and it still is, and its replacement is a critical need for the county to implement as soon as possible. Another pressing capital improvements need for the county is to expand the family court facilities on Heckle Boulevard. As having served in the past as an appointed guardian and light him in child protection cases for a number of years, I can attest to the aptness of Councilwoman Cox's characterization of the inadequacy of those existing facilities two weeks ago. They disgracefully detract from the dignity of the court and its effectiveness in delivering justice to our citizens. I suggest both those critical needs can be addressed by using the county's present unused bond capacity. This is how. There presently are $64 million in funds in the county treasury. Of that amount, $43 million are uncommitted. As to the county's unused bond capacity, that amount is currently $49,900,000, and that amount is projected to increase to $52,900,000 on July 1, 2015. Thus, the county's bond capacity as of July 1, 2015, would be almost enough to immediately implement both capital projects, especially if the county takes advantage of the recommended cash cost savings of keeping the legislative deeds office and the finance offices where they are for the next eight years or so. The difference, it'd be a couple million dollars, would be made up by using some of those $43 million in uncommitted county funds. Fourth, whether the option two building is included in a county referendum or alternatively implemented outside the referendum by using the county's existing bond capacity, I pledge to work strenuously for the approval by the voters in a county referendum of all needed capital projects, and goodness, we need them all, especially in the east, and all the other members of our ad hoc committee have made that same commitment. Fifth, we urge you to make your decision tonight to build a new administration building on coming option two, number downtown. Now is the time, let's not drag the issue out any longer. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, sir. At least we agree on that last point. Next will be the public forum. Remember, you only have two minutes, so when I call your name, I don't want to be rude, but at two minutes, I cut you off. If you, and I don't think anybody would clap, but if you clap, we stop everything, and then you cut somebody off the list. So out of respect to your fellow citizens, let's not clap or do anything like that. Let's be respectful, which I'm sure you will be. The first person is Billy Hagner.
My name is Billy Hagner. I live at 1901 Voyager Road in York, South Carolina, but I'm physically located on Allison Creek Peninsula, which is between Big Allison and Little Allison. The peninsula is approximately 16,000 feet long and 4,000 feet wide. According to the county's 2010 housing information, there are 257 homes there. But looking at it today, with the new housing completions and vacant lots to be built, there's going to be over 500 homes there. This area is zoned RD2 and a scenic overlay district. According to the county's ordinance, the purpose of this scenic overlay is to preserve and enhance the natural beauty and the appearance of Lake Wiley, the Greenway, Kings Mountain, and Brattensville. The reason I'm here tonight is to express my concern and surprise that the planning commission approved the proposal, the proposed lakeside glen development for 617 homes on 353 acres of the peninsula, which is a density of 1.75, without anyone in the community knowing anything about it. When completed, there'll be a total of 1,100 homes, a 320% increase over what it was in 210. This development plan was first explained to the residents of Allison Creek in 2008 by Crescent in a town hall type meeting, and we were told there was going to be one single-family home per acre and an agreement signed. Due to depressed economy, nothing was done. Now, all of a sudden, the development urged out of nowhere with almost twice the density. The possibility of the new density regulations being enacted may have triggered this. In addition to all this, a major expansion of the Allison Creek boat landing is being planned with RV facilities. I and others have many concerns, including environmental issues, lake sustainability, road issues, and our major concern is being a safe evacuation should there be a nuclear plant emergency. This concern was expressed to Crescent in 2008. Should an evacuation be required, and everyone only took one car, the line of cars would be 33,000 feet, 33,000 feet, which is twice as long as the peninsula. What I'm asking the county council to do now is put this project on hold immediately until three things are done.
Billy, I apologize, but I have to cut you off. It's been two minutes. Next person's Bobby Walker.
Thank you, Council. Robert Bobby Walker, 5690 Williamson Road in historic and beautiful Bethesda community with a Rock Hill, South Carolina address. I'm here tonight to remind folks of our upcoming multipurpose agri-tourism center meeting with some of the media here is one of my purposes that I rise. The next meeting will be Thursday, the 2nd of April, at 6:00 PM at the Greater York Chamber Building in good old historic downtown Yorkville. We've had a great outpouring, not only at the meetings, but also on emails and phone calls, so there's another opportunity, and we formed three committees and ready to go to work, but I wanted to give the, all of York counties another chance to try to come to our next organizational meeting as we move forward. Second thing I rise for tonight is to kind of bring awareness and in memory of a good friend, a distant, distant cousin, and what I consider also a mentor. Some of y'all maybe knew Mr. John Stringer Rainey. A lot of y'all in this room definitely knew his first cousin, Joe Rainey. First met Mr. John Stringer Rainey through his cousin Joe, and John Stringer Rainey, I won't go through, there's a six-page obituary, some of y'all caught, a small news article probably in, I think it was probably Sunday's paper about Mr. Rainey. His roots ran deep in York County soil, even though he was not raised or born here. But most of us maybe will get a paragraph in an obituary, but anybody that has a six-page obituary, I'll pass it around, and I'm going to hopefully have the legislature, our delegation do some type of honor through Columbia. But he was a conservative Republican, but also a true philanthropist, and understood what it meant to also save historic properties, and he also had no problem sometimes going against his Republican brethren as well, but he was a, he was a great man, so I wanted to honor him tonight, John Stringer Rainey. Thank you.
The next person, and I'm sorry, I can't read your last name, David, is that Comer?
Coon.
Coon?
Yeah, like that.
I'm sorry.
Here's copies for the board. I'm a resident, 1963 Martha's Vineyard Road, York, South Carolina. David Coon, I'm representing the Homeowners Association of Allison Creek. We're objecting to new high-density neighborhood off Allison Creek Road. An evacuation due to the power plant or any other emergency would be increasingly difficult with 600 additional homes. We were promised by Crescent Land in 2008 that it would be no more than one lot per acre on this land, and they gave us a deeded, recorded deed for that. Phil Hayes headed it up, and no more than one half acre, 350 homes. County Council, York County Manager, Crescent Land, recently, in 2014, rescinded that deed restriction. We didn't know anything about it. Nobody posted anything, nobody did anything. The impact due to water, deterioration of quality of life, elimination of natural habitats threatens everybody in this community. You ought to be ashamed, these people ought to be ashamed of themselves. First of all, Crescent Land is, went back on the word. Allison Creek Road is constantly, currently being destroyed by trucks on other subdivision of over 190 homes. We've got potholes big enough to run a tractor-trailer in. We fought for years to get that road redone, and now it's being destroyed by development. The county is planning an RV camping facility off Allison Creek Road, which is going to put additional traffic out there. We're looking at over 1,200 residents out in this, on this road. It's absurd. We'll be back. We ask that you stop the development committee from this decision. They're made up of four developers, two real estate agents, a real estate attorney, and what in the world are foxes doing in the chicken house?
Next person is Jonell Hagner. Maybe you can finish off what Billy was going to say.
I'm probably not. I'm Jonell Hagner. I live at 1901 Voyager Road. That's a York address, also on the peninsula. First, and I'm going to read mine, I said, "It's a real shame that we're all here tonight having to use our time and yours even discussing this proposed disaster of a development here on the Allison Creek Peninsula." At first, I was going to blame, place all the blame for this rapidly progressing effort to get this development implemented on the York County Planning Commission. It has come to our attention that they are simply voting on virtually every development that comes before them, which for whatever reason is disturbing, but they are doing so in compliance with rather lax, outdated regulations that developers must follow. So the first order of business for all you guys should be to change those regulations to protect the natural resources that we are blessed with and to protect those of us who have invested in our homes and our property in this county. But back to the proposed development, these rushed-up secretive doings literally are making me physically ill. I expect better of this from our York County government. This sort of backdoor, underhanded style of governing is more in line with the stuff coming out of Washington, DC. Obvious mistakes have been made by all involved. It is time to stop this development in its tracks. You need to respect this scenic overlay area and start to listen to those of us who live here, drive here, send our kids to school here, and pay hefty taxes here. Hopefully, this council is listening to us, and we can all work together to make the lives of York County residents as good as it can be, because like Christie said, it's pretty darn good, and it's no sense in overkill and overgrowth and ruining it, but I appreciate the opportunity to thank, to speak to y'all.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person is Sam McGregor.
Thanks for letting me be here. Sam McGregor, 761 Summerwood Drive, Rock Hill, but I'm pastor of Allison Creek Presbyterian Church, which is on the corner of the peninsula, which has just been mentioned. The concern that I have where I sit is the intersection of 274 and Allison Creek Road. When it was redone, when 274 was expanded to five lanes, they, it was initially promised to us, and when we sold the land to them, that the Allison Creek Road would be raised up to the level of 274 so that it would provide visibility to both ways. That was not done after we had sold the property to the highway department and negotiated the contract and all that. So what's happened is, it's a very low intersection there, and so the visibility is dangerous in both directions. In the last two months, two members of my congregation have been in major accidents at that intersection. That is going to increase with, with higher density development going on back. You'll notice that the development is looking at putting in a second access road, and the reason that they've chosen the spot, you'll see that on 274, there is an access point. Well, that was because of a conversation that we had with Crescent nine, 10 years ago about rerouting Allison Creek Road to that point where to eliminate the visibility problem. And so now we're getting word that, you know, that's going to be a second access point, not a contrary access point or initial access point, and so that's going to increase even more of the potential danger in that intersection. So before you move forward on any more development back behind that, we need to allow us to work with DOT to look at that intersection and make some changes there, either light or preferably moving the road down where it should be to eliminate those concerns. So I have some real concern, and you've heard voice about how this was done without input, without input in the community around it, because, and that does concern me as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next person's Deborah Jordan.
Bobby.
Give her a second. Anybody see a lady running down the hallway? No.
I hear one.
Okay.
It was news to me when I got a phone call last week.
There you are. I'm sorry about that. I was going to wait for you.
Just wanted to mention a few things that have already been mentioned, but the intersection is a great concern to us with the traffic being there, the runoff from any of this development into Lake Wiley, no traffic signal being there, overcrowding schools, if you put, and I've heard two different numbers, I've heard 600 houses and I've heard 1,100 houses. 2.68 people are in the average household in York County. If you talk about two kids for every one of those houses into the overcrowded schools we've already got, that's going to be a great impact. Also, most households around us have at least two cars, so you're putting 2,200 more cars through there. So all of those type of things. Also, what's it going to impact as far as our trash collection area over there? That's going to have to be expanded. There are just a lot of things that need to be considered with this, and especially considering the fact that no one knew anything about this. I found out last night. So this has just really been backdoor, and I think we need to really look at this entire situation before things move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is that your husband that's next?
No, we just signed it together.
Did he want to speak to? O'Neal Jordan? That's, no, he's not speaking. Okay. Barbara Christopher.
I'm Chris.
Okay. Is it just you, Chris, or she?
Yeah, I'm Chris.
Right. Is she going to speak too?
No.
Okay.
No. I'm here with my wife Barbara, and I just wanted to let you know that we were very disappointed to learn about the progress at Allison Creek and the plans there. Not that we're not pro-development or that we're not pro or progressive, but we were just really concerned. I took it upon myself to contact all of my immediate neighbors down Tiger Paw Lane where I live at 2064, and I can tell you, there was concern like nothing that I've seen before. And as a result, I volunteered to come here and just express the concern from all of my neighbors. We are asking for putting this project on hold to get the community involved and get our participation in this planning process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Chris. Next person is Harry Bradford. Y'all let me know when you see a man running down the hallway. Harry Bradford.
Somebody else can take this turn. I think he had to leave.
Oh, he did? Okay. Last person is Rich Van...
Remen.
Remen. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that takes care of our public forum. Next order of business is a public hearing. Can I ask for clarification, though, just with everybody's concern? Do you know when that's going to come before council?
It's already come before council.
It's already?
Chairman, maybe I can add some more to, and what we've heard from some of the constituents. There was a preliminary class that was submitted. The planning commission considered it at their last meeting.
Okay.
This is by right of zoning. The president had, as one of the gentlemen mentioned, there's been a planning effort, obviously, and studied for that area for quite some time.
Okay.
The staff did provide some recommendations for dealing with the traffic conditions and the development on that site, and the planning commission did accept those recommendations. There will be a traffic light at the intersection of Allison and 274.
Okay.
Along with additional improvements there, as I understand it, to handle the flow of traffic going out that peninsula.
Okay.
That won't come before the county council for your review. That was, the planning commission, as we were set up, reviews the preliminary class, and they did, as you've heard, they did approve those plans, so they'll allow them to go through the review process with your staff.
Yes, county council did change the zone on this property or the deed restrictions without notifying the neighborhood, no posting, nothing. We were under the understanding it was 350 to 380 houses. Now you're talking about 600 houses. You need to get involved. You need to stop this process.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, could I make a comment?
Uh, well-
But being that this is such a prominent issue.
Yeah, just real quick, because this is Mr. Henderson's district.
Yes, and we were very disappointed in your opinion. That's what's going on, Mr. Henderson.
Well, first of all, I did not know.
How could you not know?
Sir, sir, would you please let me speak, sir?
Yeah, we'll just let him make a comment and then we'll move on. Please no more outbursts because that nice-looking tall gentleman, I have to come and assist you outside the chamber.
Just, just wanted to ask my colleagues, and I think this is very much overdue, and many folks in here know that I tried, uh, very diligently to, to move this process forward back in the fall of last year, and at the 11th hour, 59th minute, got my legs cut out from under me because of, uh, a, a number of reasons, and, and many of you know about it. I, but it did start the process of getting serious about a comprehensive land use, um, uh, to, to, to actually reconsider all the things that was lacking in the last one from 2004. And then also, the possibility of some regulation changes, uh, involved in the, the current overlay at the time, which was open to possibilities of changes around the lake and so on, and, and even beyond that. But imagine if, if you would, imagine with me, my colleagues and everyone listening, say it's June 2022, and we do live in a world when some major, um, catastrophes can take place, whether they're driven by man or whether it's by accident, whatever. But say something goes wrong with the nuclear power plant. Say it's, just imagine it's a terrorist attack. It's been infiltrated by folks and all the folks on the several different peninsulas, all along the Lake Wiley area, in all districts on the shore are needing to get out quickly. It's gonna be mass confusion. It's gonna be a disaster. Folks are gonna hold us responsible because we didn't act and got bold enough, and we didn't get bold enough to push for some type of a moratorium and to push for something that needed to be done, as in yesterday. And I, I, I have made it very plain, sir, that I am one who has pushed for this. I think it's to the point now that it's to the point of no return. I feel like we have got to do something of that nature. We don't want wildfire, we don't want a bunch of wildfire rate of growth. We want well-managed growth. The Allison Creek potential, it's not that these folks are against development. They want well-managed and less density. They want to protect, they have a right to, to be able to get out of there in such cases. They have a right to get out of there without getting into, somebody getting into a big fight or somebody jumping into the river trying to get across there to get, get away from the radiation possibilities. We got a new, uh, uh, emergency management guy. That might be an issue. Okay? Stormwater runoff. You know, when, when, when you have that much density, and I'm willing to battle this, I'm getting sick of this, I'm willing to battle this, I hope my colleagues will jump in here with me because if you, I had this much water runoff all at once from major downpours, you're gonna straighten and erode creeks and streams in a minute. It won't look like any of the landscape that you started with if you continue. Traffic is already a crucial, crucial issue and other concerns. Accidents are becoming more frequent and more violent, not just there at this intersection, as the pastor said, but all over that area where we're allowing this to get totally out of order. And for, I'm just speaking for myself, but I plead with my colleagues to do something like Rock Hill City Council did and push for a moratorium and go through with it, and don't be afraid of everyone who is crying out, there's, here's a lawsuit, oh, we're gonna get you, we're gonna do thi- this. My friend, developers are gonna have to work with us in the future. Therefore, meaning, they might want to consider some of the reconsider and don't be bitter about future chances of developing in this county. We're at a point to where we have to change. We have got to do something different. And if we don't, we're gonna ruin the lake, we're gonna ruin our property values, we're gonna ruin our grandchildren by, in the name, in the name of birth defects with the way the water i- i- is already an issue. And we're gonna continue to fill up the lake.
We need to wrap this up. It was your district, so I was gonna give you a few minutes, but-
Well, I, sir, I just want to, I just want to mention, if we do not get on board with this and if we do not get the bravery, get brave enough to actually face the problem, stare it down, there's plenty of work already in the system to last till August 1st. We've got plenty, even if we stopped it at zero today.
Well, let's, uh-
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to address the backdoor comments.
Well, let, let, let's move forward. I, we, we're gonna move forward. Normally, I don't allow a, a big discussion.
I won't take two minutes. I don't need a big discussion.
No, no, let, no, let's just, let's, let's-
We've been accused of, I just wanna show it to them for our sake. If I don't need to explain it, then you can, but they, we just went through this, and they're exactly right. We went through this and had this discussion, and, uh, the ordinance, three public hearings and everything, but something's broken. I guess the two things that I wanted to point out is that we never heard about the one-acre lot promise. What we heard was the, that the way it was, was now was that 1,100 houses could be built on it now, and if we changed it to what it is now, it could be 600.
Right.
And that's what we did. And, uh, but had nobody got any notice, I could see how they felt it backdoor, but I won't make those comments. Thanks for, thank you.
Okay. Appreciate you not doing that, Mr. Henderson. Okay, let's get back to the public hearing. Uh, "Consider third reading of an ordinance and hold a public hearing authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement bound between York County and Schuffler Group to provide for a fee in lieu of taxes, to provide for a public hearing, and to provide for other matters related thereto." Uh, does anybody here wanna speak in favor? Uh, anybody opposed? Do we, we got a motion to close?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I do have one comment.
Yes, ma'am.
It's my understanding that there's a fee lot that there's been a cost-benefit analysis that's been done by David Swinson that it has worked out where we are not giving up anything, and there certainly is nothing that's required from the taxpayer at the outset, that there have been traffic studies and all of this has been done to ensure that there's not an impact to the community. And so, I believe that it's a good thing. I just wanna make sure I make that comment.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm gonna close the door.
And you made me lose track. Did we have?
Discussion's over, I think.
Uh, discussion's over, okay. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Uh, next item. Counsel to, uh, a public hearing can consider third reading of an ordinance entitled to further amend an ordinance entitled to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2014, to provide for transfers of capital facilities fund balance to the solid waste collection fund and general fund, to appropriate general fund balance to the capital facilities fund for the Moss Justice Center roof replacement, to appropriate 1997 capital project sales tax fund balance that was originally transferred from the general fund to the capital facilities fund for completion of the historic courthouse renovations, and to transfer funds from recycling center budget to the courthouse renovation budget, and to provide for other fiscal matters related to county government. Anybody here wanna speak in favor? Anybody opposed?
Move to close.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion? Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Counsel to consider third reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the zoning and development standards ordinance and official zoning and development standards maps of York County by amending ordinance 1614, a rezoning of a 2.6 acre tract of land owned by South Carolina DG LLC and located at 6695 Old York Road in the York Community, referenced by tax map number 448 parcel 003. Official zoning and development standards maps by removing said conditions of approval, numbers two and three, on the property with zoning classification of business development three, BD3.
Move to approve.
Uh, well, we're a public hearing.
I thought we hadn't had that. Okay.
Yeah. Anybody here wanna speak in favor? Anybody opposed? Have a motion to close?
Close.
Got a second? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Got a new motion?
Move to approve. I'm surprised. Second.
Discussion? Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. The next item's just a third reading, no public?
No, Mr. Chairman, this was noted for a public hearing, so please conduct a poll hearing and consider third reading. Yes.
Okay. Uh, so, "Consider third reading and public hearing of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of amendment to an existing fee agreement bound between York County, Kingsley Number Four LLC, a sponsor and merchant incorporated, a sponsor affiliate." Anybody here wanna speak in favor? Anybody opposed?
Move to close.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. New motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Hold a public hearing and consider a public service use request regarding the application of the new heritage sewer pump station requesting a county public service use under the York County zoning and development standards ordinance for a sewer pump station on county-owned property located 1180 Convention Drive and identified by tax map number 7290000557, Council District One, Mr. Johnson. Anybody here wanna speak in favor? Anybody opposed?
Motion to close.
Do we have a second? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Uh, next item is our old boyfriend. Counsel to consider, and what I wanna do first is let the staff and comings present their findings before we have a motion to place it here. Let's let them have their ability to inform us of the recent bore samplings and all the tests.
Yes.
So, I'll let you direct which way we go, Mr. Shanahan.
At the last council meeting, there were several questions that were asked, and we, we believe we have that information, so I'm gonna invite coming to get up with the presentation that they put together, and-
Uh, thank you. Good evening. Um, we do have several, um, we tried to take all the infor- the requests for information, and we provided some pretty quick due diligence outsourced to ESP, and, uh, this represents about almost 500 pages worth of information. Very interesting stuff. But, uh, to start with, this is what, this is our baseline. This is originally what we talked about. This is the work scope that we're talking about for the new government center west. Um, and the work that we, uh, conducted was a DOT requirements for the ag site. We did not have enough time to do a TIS. I know that was requested. We had traffic counts. We met with, uh, um, representatives, and we've got a really good, uh, input, uh, that really kind of backs up what we, uh, thought. We'll talk about that in a minute. The jurisdictional wetland and stream report, we did get that delineated and surveyed. Phase one environmental of that corner area, which represents several properties going back to the mid 1880s with, uh, all, uh, business practices that were, when that lot was first developed. And then soil investigation and soil borings for both sites. So, we'll start with the ag site. This is our baseline. This is the way we originally presented that we thought how, uh, option two could be, uh, developed, and that would be keeping this access open, uh, keeping this access open, and then, uh, developing a new access point, uh, on West Jefferson opposite the, uh, existing driveway. Uh, developing the corner lot, a four-story, approximately 80,000 square foot, 83,000 square foot building, um, and then additional parking in the back. Since then, we went ahead and counted all the parking spaces here, and this represents about 80 spaces. So, the first item through our, in our due diligence was to, uh, to discuss with Vic Edwards with DOT. We have a very good relationship with him. We work with him quite often. So, we brought in and talked to him, gave him all the information. There's some traffic count information, um, that, uh, had been originally produced. And in meeting with him and talking with him, uh, we kinda thought this would be a problem, that he would like this to go away. Um, and that's because of the, uh, location approximately to the, um, to the intersection. Uh, this one would remain. However, he said we could easily develop another one, uh, off of this parking lot here, 160 feet from the first one. That was their main. So, that, that works with keeping that parking lot, uh, um, viable. And then, uh, he did say that this was the preferred location, but would allow us, uh, to develop a, a access point from within 100, once we reached 150 feet back from the intersection to this location. That's, uh, in this road, uh, represents about 420 feet, so we have a little bit of room to develop a second access point. Uh, what that does, it potentially takes this property out of play. Uh, the next item that we discussed, or we pursued was wetland jurisdiction. And this is actually jurisdictional delineated. This is the head of the stream. And this is actually being fed by a storm drain system. There's probably always a draw there for the land was made, but there's, uh, being fed from a storm sewer off of Jefferson Road and then another one off of this parking lot. So, two of, two storm drain system are tying in to that, which is not terribly uncommon. We see that in old developments. Uh, it's just the way they used to do business. Um, so, what that does is you see our access point here. It really kind of impacts, uh, how that may be used. Now, we can do a zero impact to span that using a bottomless culvert, and that was one of the reasons why we did purposely get a, um, a boring in this area to find out what those soil conditions would be. Our next, uh, was, this is really the meat of this report, and it's the phase one environmental. And what you see are the contamination plumes of the, the two, um, uh, gas stations. There was one located here and then a subsequent loca- located here. All these little dots all across here are the, the wells, the DEHEC wells. And those wells can be abandoned, no problem with it, uh, letting DEHEC know. That, uh, this is basically, these at one point, the, the really dark red, that's the bad stuff. Uh, as it gets lighter, it, it gets better. But at one point, those were probably connected. There's been active mitigation of this property since about '08. Recently, the, uh, that, uh, DEHEC had a contractor that was working, mitigating, basically filtering. The way you mitigate is filter the water. It, uh, the, like, the petroleum or the gasoline floats on top of the groundwater. And at one time, there was a foot of that on top of this groundwater here, excuse me. When the contract was let with DEHEC, this was not known about. So, they, the contractor was out doing the work. This came to their attention, and they said, "Hey, you know, I didn't, I didn't include this in my price," so they were able to be released from their contract. The person that manages this site with DEHEC, that site is currently vacant. So, it, it is our understanding that once that's filled, this will be relet and it'll be more, uh, active, uh, cleaning of the site. Now, what we did learn that we didn't know before is that cleaning process is about a three to five-year process, and it severely hampers the development of this parking lot. So, option three that we talked about before on that, um, parking lot, we, we really don't think that's a viable option any longer. So, of the sites on the ag, we still think this is the only viable site. Now, what that means is it's not a water, although it's in water, it has, it's off gases, and the $30,000 premium that you'll read, or if you, we've talked about last time, that- that was confirmed, what that thirty-thousand dollars for is basically for a super-heavy-duty vapor barrier below your slab, and what that does is it protects air quality of inside the building, similar to like a radon, uh, it is not in the water, it's not an issue with drinking, it's an, it, it off-gases and it's an issue to people with the off-gassing, the environment's a different item, but it's about a three-to-five-year process of cleaning this up or it, it going away by itself. Uh, it, it, it would go away by itself, it'd be longer than three to five years, but it will take some time. But, about a thirty-thousand-dollar premium in this area. Then our next item is our soil borings and soil investigations, actually, let me go back one item, one thing that during the phase one environmental study, approximately nineteen thirty-three, there was a, from thirty-three to the seventies, there was a dry cleaning business in this area. We don't have information on if there was contamination there, these wells do not track that type of chemical, it's something to be aware of, uh, we would recommend going to a phase two if this site is chosen, just to verify, um, and there's another reason why we need to do a phase two, and I'll tell you about it in a second, that's just, that's one red flag, we just wanted to make sure everybody is aware of that. We did three borings on this site, we did three borings on the other. HA one is located about in the center of, of the proposed building area, and that is, is suitable for soil, it, it identified about a four-foot top, the top four feet was on old field, but, uh, it, it does not seem to, it will not impact our building. We did two augers here, two and two A, in both of them, we had auger refusal at one foot because we were hitting concrete, we were hitting asphalt, we were hitting PVC pipe. This is a general, so we kind of walked around and, and there is a, um, someone has pushed soil, I mean, trash, and I'm not sure if it's from the demolition of something over the years, but with PVC, you wouldn't think it's too old, but there is something, there is definitely buried soil, uh, buried trash in this general area. We will, uh, we've accounted for that, and we'll talk about that in a minute, it's something that needs to be cleaned up.
Can I just ask one question? When was, when do we, when was this report? Because I haven't seen it yet.
We just, it's hot off the press, I mean, it's literally, we just got it and going through it, and we put this together today, so...
And here again, let me clarify, and Mr. Shanahan, let you clarify, but when we had some questions two weeks ago, they agreed to try to have this information for us two weeks later, so they did kind of beyond the call of duty to bring this forward to us.
Just to, this was no easy task to, to get all this information pulled together and getting everybody to get a report that we can, um, feel a little uncomfortable with the timeframe, for example, the traffic impact study, there's no way we could get that done in two weeks, but we feel comfortable with the information that we have recommending.
And Mr. Shanahan, did you want to make?
Yeah, when that, when that information got to me today, it was somewhere around two-thirty, was it, three o'clock, somewhere around there, as soon as it got to me, I sent it out to the whole council, so... And I also, a little bit earlier than that, we actually sent you a link to that, the big report to review.
And that's re-clarifying what he said at the agenda meeting that you were attending, you made the same point then?
This may be very shallow, but if you look at the topo, it looks like it, someone pushed soil down into the field. Um, it, it could be a quick fix, um, you know, I, I've put, and I'll tell you now, but in some, I've got a summation slide, I've approximated about two-hundred thousand dollars for that cleanup and removal. Now, it may be fifty thousand, but if we hit asbestos or anything like that, lead paint or, I mean, it could be more, so I, I think I'm at a happy medium with the two-hundred thousand, but there's some credits and debits in this, in my summation, but, so, we didn't get a, a good feel there, but my gut is this, it's virgin soil underneath it, so it'd be suitable to build, certainly it'd be suitable to build a parking lot on top of. Then the reason why we did a boring back here was if we do want to cross that, we can cross it with zero, if we impact wetland at all, zero, one square foot, we have to mitigate. And so, you're allowed to do what they're called a bottomless culvert, which is basically a concrete box with no bottom, as long as you span from the high-water mark to the high-water mark. And we, we use that all the time, makes no sense because once you cover up the, uh, the stream, everything underneath it dies, and then it causes erosion, but it is allowed per DEHEC. So, we wanted to get an idea of, the foundation underneath is basically stone underneath these precast culverts, and depending on the quality of this, of the soil, impacts the, the amount of stone. We did not add a premium, any information, any monies to, to go across the, um, the stream because we think we can do it with just a retaining wall and stay a, a forty-five-foot buffer around the, the wetland. So, those are the, uh, the soil investigations for those, it's very limited, but, um, uh, so far, the, other than the trash was the only thing that we really didn't know about. The revised site recommendation, overall, what we would suggest is to leave this alone, the wetland, not pursue the purchase of this site, we can handle the parking and the access with either a driveway between this parking lot and the building, or I think it would be prudent to pursue this as a worst-case scenario with DOT, it would maximize the site, maximize the parking, I think that would be a, uh, what it would require would be some additional retaining walls between twelve and fifteen feet, and that's about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty feet. No parking, um, no access here, develop a new access here, um, so that, that would be the revised recommendation. Going to the second site, the co-op site, we did the same, we kind of tried to spread it out over the developed area that was initially, this was what we presented, we didn't want to change that. Those, um, uh, those all seem to be, come in very well, similar to the, the HA one, so we don't, we feel like the, the soil here is, is good as well. So, in summation, I wanted to compare the two, and so, this was the amount of money that we identified as a budget figure, uh, when we first made the presentation for option two, and this is the amount that we identified as option four. So, with what we've learned doing this due diligence, additional due diligence, we think we needed to add a thirty-thousand-dollar premium to treat the sub-slab with a, uh, additional vapor barrier protection. The debris removal, there's no real good way to quantify it, I'm hoping that I'm giving you worst-case scenarios. Retaining wall, that's about seventeen dollars and fifty cents a square foot for that, for the segmental retaining wall. We credited a hundred and fifty thousand that we had identified in the last, um, presentation of buying that second property, and then we credited back twelve thousand five hundred for the demolition. And so, the revised number, uh, it moved up about a hundred thousand dollars. Any questions?
Questions for comings?
One of the things we've been told is that the site is, this site, it, uh, is suitable to build another building where that parking lot is, where you just showed the, the red, the potential contamination. Long-term, are we going to be able to put another building?
Yes.
In that parking lot? We're not going to have a problem doing that?
As long as, you know, I would suggest, uh, you know, I'm not sure what's going on with DEHEC, why it's not being assigned, why that position's not filled, I would suggest us, uh, no matter what, we need to kind of put some pressure on DEHEC to get that process back started.
So, would there be any added cost?
As long as we, um, the, yes and no, the superb fund works basically first in, and as money comes available, it, it takes care of it, um, so...
So, if they have funds, we're good, if they don't have funds, we have to eat it.
Right, now, it wouldn't pay for the thirty-thousand dollars vapor barrier, but this area really won't impact anything that we would be doing here. Now, there's potential that we get in here and, and the, uh, the dry cleaners, there was some chemicals spilled or, you know, it, we did not test for that, and that's generally what you would go through in a phase two.
Any other questions?
I do.
Yes.
Um, now, I think the only thing that I requested was because of some comments that were being made as to whether or not we needed to have a traffic impact analysis, and you're saying, I guess you're, that that's not an issue, traffic's not an issue with the location.
The counts that we saw were maximum was seventeen thousand cars here, then it dropped to, and, and these are, I'm trying to remember correctly, but I think they're around seventeen thousand here, twelve thousand here, then it dropped back, some people basically doing return trips. So, seventeen thousand, um, cars, uh, you know, Vic, Mr. Edwards knew that information, and he made these recommendations still. So, uh, he is the, the AHJ, the authority having jurisdiction on what we would have to do, what we're constrained with, so if, with him, and we got in writing with him, that, uh, we feel like, um, we're, I'm comfortable with what we have, although I would say, if this is chosen, it would probably be a good thing to do a, uh, TIS, just for final verification.
Previously, I know you guys said that either location was fine with the expansion that we anticipated, has your position changed on that?
I think both sites are viable options, at one, I think, uh, one has more challenges than the other.
And does this delay anything in terms of being a constructor, you're saying that it does delay, or?
I, I think there's more, there's additional due diligence that we need to do on this site. Could that be done between now and, when funding would be, if, if the funding mechanism for this was the bond referenda, we could have the due diligence done before then. If you said we've got money to go, we want to start designing tomorrow, it would delay. So, to answer your question, um, we, we need several months to really finalize all the due diligence, uh, traffic impact study, but, um, and, and the phase two, but, I, I, you know, if I were to say, with the information I have today, this is a viable site.
And you don't think there's anything more that we need to know in order to make the decision today?
I would like to know more about that trash pile. I, I really would, but the only way to find out about that is to get out there and start digging and moving it out, so, you know, the way we, you know, potentially handle it would be to, uh, give a quantity in the bid documents that the contractor be responsible for removing from site, if it, and then ask for a unit price, if it was more than that, then we'd pay that unit price, if it was less, they would credit the, the district, the, the county. Now, we can't say that it's all hazardous material because, I mean, that could be, um, you know, a half-million-dollar pile of trash, if it's a lot of shingles, if it's a lot of car batteries, this paint cans, if it's, you know, asbestos tile, insulation, you know, that's some of the things that we will try to, uh, find out during our phase two, but again, unless you literally uncover everything, you're not going to know.
I'd be the Confederate gold with Jeff Davis.
I'm not telling anybody about it.
Confederate gold.
Get my metal detector out.
Let, let me ask you this, um, probably an unfair question, but obviously, in construction, and I don't know anything like, y'all know about construction, but I know a little bit, each day's costing more money, so can you say if it took four months, could you give me a ballpark percentage or something about the added expense?
Well, the, the due diligence component, uh, you know, I would say that it would be the cost of the due diligence, uh, which, you know, phase two, I think all told, we've got about twelve thousand dollars in what we've produced over two weeks, uh, not including Chris and mine's time. Um, I, I would, I would be taking a guess, but I would say that it'd be in the range of, you know, a TIS would probably be ten to fifteen thousand, and, uh, phase two could probably be in that same ballpark range, and, and I don't quote me on that, but what we paid for in the past, and that is in that ballpark.
Do you have any factor, because construction costs are doing this right now, the added four months adds to the cost of the building?
You know, it honestly, the sooner we get into construction, the better the county is going to be on any project.
That's the unfair question part I ask.
It, it, that's a, it, the, there's a lot of work coming on, uh, nationwide, especially in our region, this region is really being, you can drive anywhere in the county and see that, and it's, it's not the issue with materials, we're actually seeing some decline in materials, we do a east economic, uh, material report every month, and, uh, we're seeing some decline in materials, but the labor force is just not there like it was, we've lost twenty-five percent of the force and it's just not coming back, so that's where the spike's going to be, uh, and we start competing with hundreds of millions of dollars inside just this county, uh, it's supply and demand.
More questions for Jim?
Yes, um, quick comment and a question, um, one, if Arrow Road site was chosen, uh, my understanding is we would probably still want a phase two study and everything else done as well on most sites.
We did not do a phase one there, and, uh, you know, there's no wetlands that we can see, um, and there's no real red flags, however, I, we think that if that site's chosen, we would do a phase one, and the findings of a phase one dictate whether you go further into a phase two.
And my last comment is just thank you for everything y'all have done.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Henderson?
Just, uh, real quickly, you know, concerning the, uh, the so-called contaminants left, that's left in the soil.
The trash pile?
Yeah, well...
Or the, the...
The gas.
Yeah.
Stations or whatever. Uh, you know, to me, I, based on what you're telling me now and, and what, the way I'm understanding, is this could be pretty much like what Rock Hill, I mean, excuse me, Charlotte, uh, put out a while back and wanted everyone to start monitoring, uh, or, or complying to their, um, the Charlotte metro air quality gauge or whatever, but, and they kept raising the standard and, it kept raising the standard to where it was almost impossible to reach, and my, my feeling is, is that's, to be able to get more money for fines and everything else.
I think that's...
But, but with this, is, 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 has DEHEC and EPA, is that the way the standards possibly, could it be the same principle here?
No, I, I think what you're talking about is more the EPA regulations as they apply to, like, horizontal construction, because we, you know, the built roads and whatnot that York County are building fall under the EPA quality of, in the Charlotte area, I'm not an expert in the, uh, with your program, but, uh, that's my understanding of how that, you're kind of constrained to that. This would be more of a, it would be a DEHEC item, um, although contaminants would be, it's, it's governed on the state level, um, not the, the federal level, and so, um, the off-gassing of this should not come into play with the off-gassing that they are tracking and recording of the, uh, with, with EPA as they relate to the roads. I, I think I answered your question.
But should, but should dissipate naturally and within a reasonable...
They're not hazardous, you know, if you stand over them, but once you, if you contain them inside a box, then they can build up, and that's the reason why you'd take extra precaution to, uh, disallow them from, uh, entering the building. And there's other ways of doing, you can put a fan system in, but because we know they're going to dissipate over time, we, we don't think it'd be prudent to install a expensive fan system that would, you know, be a maintenance item forever and ever and draw on energy, is that...
That's fine, I understand.
Any other more questions for, uh, Jim before we let Bill speak? If there are none, thank you, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate all the coming through for us, I know you had to pull some favors to, to, to get this done.
Can you go back to just the final slide? The number one, the one that just showed the numbers, that's the only one I want. Thank you. Yeah? I want to see that slide.
Oh, okay. Um, Mr. Shanahan, do you have any other?
Uh, well, that's basically the information they gave, the only, the only other thing that I had was, there's been some questions about Arrow Road, which I personally upfront think is a very good project.
Right.
But I was just going to give you a bit of the history, just so you know.
You gave it to me last...
I emailed it to everybody, I...
Oh, you did? Well, I know you mentioned it to me, uh, upon Ms. Cox's questions or whatever, and that was, and I didn't realize all the history, so it wouldn't hurt to...
Yes.
Publicly go over that.
This project was started in two thousand and three Pennies for Progress referendum as part of the farm-to-market gravel paving, uh, program. It was one of twenty-four gravel roads that was not fully funded through the two thousand and three, uh, program. In two thousand and six, uh, so it was moved over to the Pennies Three program, in two thousand and six, Arrow Road was realigned by, at the intersection of Liberty Street near Walgreens and Lowe's Home Improvement. In two thousand and eight, an arrangement between York County and York Electric was discussed involving realignment of the roadway, where York Electric would pay for engineering designs permits and cost of any upgrades such as curb and gutter, three-lane utilities. In two thousand and thirteen, Arrow Road was annexed into the city of York and was no longer a county-maintained roadway. In two thousand and fourteen, the engineering department solicited bids for the gravel pavement pro, program, and the lowest bid was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand by Granite Contracting. Recently, the York and Electric... Recently, the York and Electric, we had discussed maybe doing a fifteen-acre swap depending on where the, the building was. In October two thousand and fourteen, economic development C funds and penny-for-progress funds remaining from Sutton Springs Road were committed to the project. And in two thousand and fifteen, bids were received for widening and installing curb and gutter and utilities on Arrow Road, Rogers Grayden, the lowest bidder was one million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And again, if you all decided to keep the, the building up here, York Electric would be paying four hundred thousand dollars towards that one million, three hundred thousand dollar bill.
And then the point?
The point, the point is that it's been going on for a long time. It's been going on since two thousand and three.
Right. Well, essentially the point I was going to, exactly what you're saying, but just to cut to the chase, the, uh, the production of, of the construction, the admin building was, had nothing to do with the plans on that road.
Y'all have done that for years.
That was in formation back before I even got on council.
Yeah.
But we're not in any, in any contract.
No, no, no ma'am, no, we're not.
That's a separate question.
Yes. Say that one more time.
This issue of, I mean, I guess, I assume we're jumping to this road issue because we discussed the differential being about one point three million, which just near is the difference between the cost of the two proposed sites.
No.
So I, I guess my point and my question was, there's been a lot of discussion about it, there's been money earmarked, but there's been no decision or contract that's been executed.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. And again, my recommendation, even if you do it here, I think the road is good for York County. I would, I mean.
That's definitely good for York.
Yeah, well, I, I'm looking.
Which is good for York County.
Correct.
Yeah.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
They, one of the questions was, what was York willing to do, and, and Councilman Shiflett, I think, covered a lot of it. I just wanted to make sure that if, if this site is chosen, that the streamlined process, that we, we understand that upfront. We ran into a couple of problems building these other two buildings with the areas of jurisdiction. And, and I think that, you know, let's get us all on board at the beginning and then, and have it go and we aren't adding stuff throughout the process.
That kind of had a little bit to do with Arrow Roads slowing down. But we won't go there. Yes, sir.
Do I understand that we're to consider at this point, so I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, sir.
That we approve option two site for the Ag Building downtown. I don't see anything in the reports that changed anything drastically from what we're already told.
Do we have a sec?
Second.
We got a second discussion. And what I'm going to point out, I want everybody to say their piece. We're not going to go back and forth, back and forth. Everybody, anything on your mind, I'll sit here and quietly let you speak for twenty minutes if you want to. But when you're done, that's it.
I don't know, ma'am.
We're, we're, we're not going back and forth. We've knocked this around enough. You make your points you want to make. This is not, you know, you, everybody has their opinion now. So you make your points, everybody makes their points, I'll make my points, we vote, and we'll be done with it.
Oh, if you start over there, I don't have a problem with it.
I'm going to last.
He wants to ask.
He, he, he's got seniority on you, so I'll start on this side.
I'm fine with that. I'll be very brief. I think there's been more than enough information brought before us. As I said, you know, I, I appreciate everything Cummings done to, to gather this other information we asked for two weeks ago. None of it, in my opinion, is a game changer. So, you know, I don't see any reason to continue to beat what we've talked about for the last several weeks. Downtown's the right spot, in my opinion.
Am I up next?
That's, that's it. Well, I'm really liking you.
I'm hoping no one actually takes it a lot at twenty minutes per person that Chairman's given us. But I, I would just say, first off, when, when the issue came up, you know, my background, being economics, you know, you look at the price tag and you think, if I was shopping for a house, which one, if money was the issue, which one would I be attracted to? And if I'm trying to save money, obviously I will be in favor of the Arrow Road Site. And, and that's where I initially landed at, you know, looking at the economics, you know. Part of my job and our job is to, to get the most for our money, to save the taxpayers' money. So that's where I fell in on the original question. But over the last couple of weeks, after getting phone calls and having meetings and thinking about the historical value, you know, we, we put money into the courthouse and trying to help save the downtown portion of it. And with this option, being able to piggyback off of that, you know, that helped, that carries some weight. You know, the whole presentation today about our legacy, what are we doing to preserve that legacy? I think that probably hit home more than, than some of the other conversations because the, the, the argument of employees coming to, to walk downtown or to eat downtown, you know, if they're going to eat downtown, we, we're moping out, we're not horse and buggy. We can travel across water bridges and streams wherever if we wanted to come to a certain place to eat. So that part didn't really carry that much weight. But the price tag, you know, you can't, I can't get over just agreeing to spend additional money. But at the same time, the legacy part and the, the, looking at the, the skyline, if you used to fly over downtown York, if we were to move this admin building to Arrow Road Site, it would certainly diminish the, that part. And certainly, you know, hearing the stories of people moving to the area because of what the historical value brings to it, it, it certainly carries some weight. You know, it's, it's tough for me to stomach spending additional money, being a economics kind of background kind of guy. And no way, shape, or form, I don't want to do anything to suck the life out of downtown that we've heard that. Because in my opinion, when I came to York over ten years ago to get a marriage license, it was still the same way as it is today. It wasn't much going on. So I didn't really buy into the argument that we're going to kill downtown or this is going to save downtown because it's been stagnant for over ten years. So that really wasn't a deciding factor. But knowing that, you know, this will help sustain some of what's going on downtown and, you know, knowing what Rock Hill's going through, we're trying to get the TIF and revitalize some of the situation that we have in Rock Hill, I wouldn't want York to be in that same situation. And if this can remotely help avoid that situation, I would, it's going to help swing me the other way to, to help keep the building downtown. I don't know if I'm doing it for the right reason, but I try to take, try to take the emotions out of it because we do get a lot of emotional phone calls and emails and, and presentation. But I, I think I will, I'll support the downtown site considering what we've heard today. No more obstacles being put in place, the cost. Now, don't, don't blow me up, don't blow my phone up saying how we spent the extra money and we could have saved money. Because all too many times, we get a situation where we get criticized for spending that extra money. So what's good for the goose is also good for the game. So please save those phone calls when we do spend that extra money on things that you don't think we should spend it on. I'm just saying, be, be fair to us in our decision-making. But I'm, I'm sure you guys don't care what was the reason that made me decide to keep it downtown. You just want me to vote for it downtown. So I, I appreciate it. And then sometimes send me an email when things are going not so well as well. And, and keep, keep us all in your prayers because this is not an easy job, it wasn't an easy decision. But I'll give my support to keep it downtown.
Ms. Cox?
I'll reiterate my comments from last time. My problem with voting on where to put something we have not agreed to vote on and have not decided where that money's coming from is, to me, a mistake. So I think that, that is a problem. But we're at the point where this is on the agenda and I'm not going to allow my vote to go unheard. But I, I reiterate that, and I think that, that it's not putting the cart before the horse. I base my decision on the facts. The facts are, the cost differential just doesn't exist. When you consider the fact that you have to have the road in place, it's one point three million, the cost is, it, it, there is no difference. The cost is a wash. That's what our contractors previously said. What it would do though, is it would, it would detrimentally affect downtown, which is an added cost when you consider the fact that at some point, and there's already been discussions about if, if it doesn't go downtown, is there going to be a TIF that's going to then be done? The reason why I think it needs to stay downtown is because the buildings and the traffic that are already there stay there. We avoid a TIF. It will allow for greater efficiency, allow the buildings to remain close together. The decision to keep the courthouse downtown was a decision made by previous council. And access to that building is important with the rest of the buildings. It will allow us to adhere to the law. It will allow us to preserve the valuation and the investment that we've made in the other buildings here downtown. And it will allow us to use all of the York co-op property for commercial tax base, which is what we're supposed to be doing. And finally, we can't embrace our future unless we accept who we are, and we are York County. This is our history. This is who we are. My vote is to keep it here.
Mr. Johnson?
I have said from the get-go that my vote was going to come solely down to the financial aspect of this. That has not changed. I do not agree that this is a wash. I, I view it as a one point three, one point three, one five million dollar cost that we did not have to incur. But certainly the will of this council is to, to put it downtown. I'm not going to vote for downtown. I'm going to vote to put it on Arrow Road because I believe this is one point three million dollars. I will remind this council, later on, a couple of months from now, you'll be voting on a budget. And in that budget, I feel confident there's going to be a request for a tax increase. That tax increase is going to be probably about nine hundred thousand to one point one million dollars. And there will be a great gnashing of teeth. And there will be a whining and groaning, and there will be all sorts of going on about it. How we do not want to raise taxes, yet we are going to spend one point three million dollars tonight that we did not have to spend. I, I hope that everyone remembers this when they get to May and June and how we're spending the extra money. If it would have been two hundred thousand dollars, I would have voted to have moved it. Had it swung the other way, I would have voted to keep it, keep it here. I've been very consistent since we started talking about this last November. So I will be voting to move to Arrow Road.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that it is, as far as the, the basic essential of government is not to create jobs, it is to create conditions, in my belief, at least, that my, my deep, my heartfelt conviction is to help create conditions to bring jobs, cause jobs to happen. And profit is, is definitely not a dirty word. I believe the private business world will utilize, create profit, and generate taxes there that will do far better than we will. And I, and I'm convinced that that property, it's in a prime location out there, it's going to happen naturally. And by us being here, keep things more centralized, keep things more, as far as I'm concerned, more organization. And again, it, it's, it's not our job to be a, a, a big job creator in, in the sense that I feel that this was heading in. And, and again, I'm going to support the site two position because I believe the historic value is there. When you look at the big picture, the big picture, I am convinced that this will be the, the, the right decision when it's all said and done. And as far as budget goes, I think that any given time, just like people doing their own homes, if they need to cut five or six percent, seven percent from any given budget in their own homes, we should be able to.
Well, I think everybody can count, so sigh of relief I can feel from the audience. Mr. Williams?
I think that happened a long time ago, but at any rate.
Yeah, I bet you're right.
Y'all spoke well. I don't have a lot to add. I would like to reiterate, reiterate what Ms. Cox said, that we are talking about a location only here. We have not talked about the financing mechanism and, and when to vote on it and what bond referendum use. So right now, we're just talking about the, the location. I've maintained all along that it was, money-wise, it was about the same when you go with the unknown change orders. And we won't know until, underage, we would know the, whether the cost savings if we built both of them and found out what added costs were and, and the, and the unexpected costs were. We have a strong Tea Party presence in, in York County, and I expected my biggest fight with that argument would be them. Did hear from them and talked to them and explained it and, and got a nice email back stating that this was not a conservative matter, that the two prices were essentially the same. So I do maintain that, that, that as far as price goes, it, it kept open both options. My original thought was it needs to stay downtown, but with any idea, I try to stay open-minded and, and, and listen to folks. I listened to a lot of folks. I made one promise when I ran for office, and that was to listen to people. I hope I do a good job. I got people that are going to tell me when I don't. But I did hear a couple of people fought for the Arrow Road Site, and it was mostly economic development. And, but I, like Mr. Henderson, believe we put Arrow Road in, that, those, that goes away. But, and that was a couple of people for that site. I heard from, I wish I heard from more people because, because it is good when, when, when people get involved. But we heard, heard a lot of, heard a lot of people from York talk about it. But what was, what was even more amazing is there's people from Rock Hill, Fort Mill, Clover, Lake Wiley, all over the county talking about expressing some of the same reasons that Ms. Cox did about our history and, and where we are and sense of place and all that. For those reasons, I too will support this motion.
Well, it's amazing how you can hear different numbers and come to all kind of different conclusions. But I do want to point out a, a couple of things. I know when this started, there were a lot of things said that probably should not have been said. But I want to hold elected officials accountable. One comment I heard was Mayor Lee at the town council saying he had contacted me and I never responded back. This is the letter I sent to him. In receipt of his letter dated September fifth, this is dated September seventeenth, saying I would be honored to come before the town council, but I would prefer or recommend that, kind of waiting till we kind of know what we're doing. But anytime he wanted me to appear, I'd be honored to appear. And it was said that I did not respond back. So I do want to just clarify that point. Also, to make that point, when, a year ago, when I talked to the mayor about possibly Moss Justice Center and putting it there, that was one site we were looking at. He told me at the time he'd be very thrilled to work with me to make that happen by putting that center in the town limits to qualify for that site. Also, I serve on COG. I understand some of the numbers we were given were presented by COG, which were disturbing to me because they were not true numbers. But that being said, I did request some concrete answers about what the town of York would, would provide to do to help and didn't get any of that. Got a lot of wishful talk about grants and this or that, and possibilities or whatever, but nothing concrete there. But that aside, I'm going to wrap this up by just saying some things I wanted to say. I wrote it down because I, I didn't want to leave out anybody. But I want to thank Cummings for all your excellent work. You know, you, you gave the county a focus when we were essentially a boat without a rudder. I didn't agree with your recommendation on the courthouse, but with your reputation, all that you've done for any governmental body you've worked for, I trusted it a hundred percent. And I'm sure, if anything, you may save, save us even more money. Although, as people understand, I called that a money pit, which it was, it was supposed to be finished before I even got on council. But once Mr. Shanahan took charge and got to the bottom of it, we put, you know, we're putting it on the fast track now to do what we have to do. I also want to thank Mr. Shanahan and the administration. As I said, you took a situation that was very confusing, and we essentially had a mess with the capital projects. You brought clarity to it. You took what we all agree was not the best of a consultant study and got with Cummings and cleaned that up to provide us with clear recommendations, which in this case, you did recommend the co-op site. And one point I want to make too, that some of us that have served for a while on council will appreciate, when there was some misinformation given at a presentation by the people that wanted to maybe put it downtown, instead of playing the gotcha moment, which I'd seen occur with previous town manager, or, sorry, council manager, you met with the people and you clarified the points and wanted to make sure they just understood everything. And your total focus was not to embarrass them, but to just provide facts and make sure that everything was transparent and you worked with them to enhance their understanding. But, you know, I'm not going to repeat all the information that was given. Obviously, there is a price difference of about 1.3 million dollars, assuming that we don't run into any of the contamination issues with the parking lot or the wetland issues and building the, the box as you described it. Of course, the logistic issues, even if this land was as pure as the, uh, Arrow Road site, we're gonna have logistic issues. That causes delays in construction. That's a no-no, so we're gonna have to deal with that added cost. Um... You know, I, I just, I understand history, like I said in the past. I'm an old York County boy. My great-grandfather, I think, was the postmaster here in York. Uh, might have been mayor too, or at least served on the town council. You know, I'm very proud of where I come from, and I carry it with honor on my shoulder. But, um, it doesn't keep me from looking ahead. I, I don't like being myopic, and I think we need to plan ahead. And I think we need to plan ahead, a plan ahead for all citizens. We represent the whole county. We are, as I've said 100 times, we're not the town council of York. Um, certainly, like any town, any city, there's blighted areas, and those town councils need to deal with it. That's not the county council's job. But in some ways, I kinda feel like we are a town council tonight. But, uh, you know, when we save taxpayer dollars, uh, when we can prepare for the future growth, which I think the other site was better for, certainly, that was not part of the argument, but as even York COOP realized, it would help trigger the economic spark they needed in that site to now trigger growth instead of just kinda keep waiting or the, whatever they have to do to make it happen. Uh, plus, the location was closer to the majority of citizens of York County, so it just seemed to be just a perfect scenario that you, you know, it just, it was unbeatable. But, uh, you know, talking to the majority of citizens, we had a referendum committee that represented all corners of the county. They recommended the, um, Arrow Road site. I think even, uh, a few of our public works officials that work for the county was sending an email to the county manager thanking him for us thinking ahead and not, uh, putting the, the man on the roads in this area that it would create. Uh, and according to that person, it was, and everybody agreed with him in public works, and they deal with issues like this. But, you know, in my opinion, which I always talk about being a voice of the people, uh, I will say that I clearly feel like, um, the voice of the people wanted the Arrow Road site by York COOP. And, uh... I certainly respect the administration's wishes, their recommendation. I respect the professionals that recommended the Arrow Road site. I appreciate the referendum committee recommending that for the last presentation we had. And, uh, you know, I, I wanna be a voice of the people. I don't want, want to be a voice of special interests. So that's why I'm voting for the Arrow Road site. And, uh, I will say though, obviously, we know where that's going. I'll do everything in my power to make sure that site works. We move forward and make the best of it. But that being said, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
And next item. Council to consider award of bid number 2271 for the construction of Arrow Road Relocation Project Bid Number 2271 to the lowest responsive bidder, Rogers Grading Incorporated, in the amount of $1,373,078.20.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Cox.
Um, as I understand it, we're talking about the voice.
Councilmember Cox, sorry.
As I understand, you know, what the folks have voted for, what Pennies for Progress voted for was the 168,000 dollar approval for the two-lane road. The rest of the, the, the road improvements were done, I assume, by some sort of unwritten agreement. And at this point, we have existing roads that I think need and deserve the attention. I cannot conceive of a, if you build it, they will come. Typically, you have a business that's going to locate somewhere before you commit to funding. I understand that, uh, there's been funding committed from previous projects to this through economic development. So, I mean, I can understand other council members' belief to move forward with this. And I, I think what I would say is if we're going to be the voice of the people, I certainly have no problem with moving forward with what was voted on under Pennies, which was the 168,000 dollar improvement. We need to get that done. And, um, I think that it's a great thing that we have a local contractor who has approved for this. And so I, I agree with that point. But at this stage of the game, we've got folks, and when we went to the planning commission, uh, one of, one of the meetings recently in Baxter, we have existing roads right now that have to be dealt with. And, um, we need to be doing that. We need to be using our money to deal with those things instead of moving forward. So for that reason, um, I will, I will not be voting with this.
Mr. Link.
Thank you. I have a hard time understanding why this has become such a big issue when every council member up here, other than myself and Councilmember Cox, voted last year to spend 1.6 million dollars on this road. Um, it was put out for bid. The bids came back at 1.3 million dollars, which is 300,000 dollars less than what the other five council members here approved last year. And now, we've been told that York Electric COOP will put three, or 400,000 toward that 1.3 million. So I have a real hard time understanding why we're having any real further discussion of this really, because everyone up here, other than Councilmember Cox and myself, already voted to spend 1.6 million, and we're only gonna spend 900,000. We're gonna spend almost half of what we voted to spend already, or previous council voted to spend. So I will be supporting it, because I have a hard time understanding why everyone up here, other than the two of us, are not supporting it now. I was gonna make a quick.
Mr. Brody.
I was gonna make a quick comment. You know, we, we've talked about the potential of the Arrow Road site, and I think we'll be shortsighted if we go back, if we scale back and just do the simple, cut a road, pave it. You know, we should build it to the, to the point or to the standards that it can handle some of what we anticipate coming to get on our tax road, to provide the tax base. Because if we build a simple road, we're gonna get a simple development, and it's not gonna be the tax base generator like we anticipated. If we say this site's gonna develop on its own naturally, but we do, it's part of our responsibility to put things in place to foster that economic development. I think if we scale it back and only spend 160, whatever, some odd thousand dollars to, to do the road, I'm sure, uh, COOP's not gonna say, well, we'll just pay the whole 168, since we anticipated doing 400. Uh, I think they wanna put some skin in the game at the 400, because they want it done right, because it's gonna spark that development, and it's gonna help us in the long run with putting, uh, have, generating a bigger tax base. So I'm all for, um, supporting this part of it, considering we still not gonna spend as much as we anticipated spending. So why not build it to the point where it can handle what we expect it to do once development takes off? And besides, we're, we're spending half of what we anticipated. So I, I, I would hope, um, this thing has enough support to pass the way it's written. Um, and we do have to be the visionaries. We can't always think, um, the next year, the next two years. We, we thinking, it's part of our jobs to think down the road. And I think, um, we're doing the right thing if we go ahead and take the plunge and, and make the investment. I think we'll get a bigger return in the long run.
Everybody? Um, let me just say that certainly I agree with the road. I think it's a very logical road. Uh, I think it's a needed change. I think it's a smart thing to do. Um... But per concerns about our expense, I mean, we're, now, look, looks like we've put in about 34 million dollars into the town of York. Sooner or later, the town of York's gotta put a little bit of skin in the game. And with us dealing with the courthouse money and in this expense, assuming we don't run into any major issues, other than the, the delays and how that affects things, um, I just feel, and I don't disagree with the road change. I agree with it 100 percent. I mean, I'm chairman of the I-77 Alliance. I see the benefit. Do not disagree at all about the road. I just feel like sooner or later, I have to look out for the taxpayer and just say, well, wait a minute now. We're doing all this for you. You've gotta help out a little bit. So that's my heartburn with this, because, uh, I believe in the road. I believe in economic development. I'm just having to balance, how far do we go as a county without any help? So, um, because of that, not because I'm against the road, but because I feel like there's only so much we can do, uh, I'm gonna vote to not support us paying for it. Uh, that being said, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Four to three.
Are you in on four three? Yeah, four, three. Uh, next item. Um, and I'm gonna give a minute or so. There's a rumble, and let the audience move if they need to move. Oh, it went four, three. For the fan board. I mean, it's, it's a definite good thing. I just think we need to get some help on something. Okay, uh, let's move forward. Under new business, council to consider an emergency temporary dwelling permit request, 873 Will Moth Road.
Move to approve. I've been out, um, and looked at this property. I've spoken with the gentleman. I've spoken with staff.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Oops, sorry.
We got one more, one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I, oop, I did. Sorry. Uh, excuse me.
Sorry.
Sorry about that. Uh, rezoning action, consider second reading case number 1402, tax map number 577000070. Rzone property from BD 3 to RC 1, um, adjacent to 34 Quayside Court in the Lake Wiley community.
I'll move to approve on second reading. And this is, uh, this is, uh, nothing to do, as far as I know, concerning the other big issue or anything related to it. So I move forward with this.
Okay. And we had a second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Now, the next one. I apologize again for missing one item. Uh, council to consider an emergency temporary dwelling permit request, 873 Will Moth Road.
And, um, as I was saying, I've spoken with Mr. Bradley. I've been out to his property and looked at it, um, you know, his situation, talked to staff. Um, and at this time, I'd like to make the motion that we approve his request for, uh, emergency temporary dwelling.
Second. Discussion. Sure, nobody wants to discuss that a little bit? Alrighty.
We're talking, we're deferring it.
Okay, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Next item. Council to cons, council to consider authorizing a proclamation honoring the York County Coroner's Office for the International Association of Coroners and Medical Examiners accreditation.
Move to approve.
Second.
And I was looking for the resolution.
It's in here.
Uh, I know, I just couldn't find it. I'd like to put it in the record.
You want me to read it?
Yes, would you do that?
I will. Uh, whereas the York County Coroner's Office received accreditation by the International Association of Coroners and Medical Examiners on January 10th, 2015. Whereas the York County Coroner's Office self-submitted to this process for the purpose of ensuring that the operating policies, procedures, and practices are within the international guidelines. And whereas the York County Coroner's Office was subjected to review of 288 standards, including administrative, forensic, investigative, and facility review. And whereas the IAC and ME requires 100 percent compliance of mandatory standards and 90 percent of all applicable standards. And whereas the York County Coroner's Office is one of only four offices in the state of South Carolina to achieve such an accomplishment. And whereas the York County Coroner's Office makes every effort to provide the highest level of service to the citizens, neighbors, and visitors of York County, and this is accomplished by a dedicated team of well-trained investigators through timely and compassionate investigations of deaths occurring in their jurisdiction. And they strive to maintain a mutually beneficial relationship with local law enforcement, as well as with local EMS providers. And now, therefore, it be resolved that the York County Council does hereby proclaim that the York County Coroner's Office has complied with the standards of the International Association of Coroners and Medical Examiners, and they are leading the way in service and compassion for those they serve and their community, and is worthy of recognition as an outstanding asset to the citizens and businesses of York County, South Carolina.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments?
I hear nothing but excellent things coming from folks in our community. And I actually saw our coroner at a funeral. I hope she doesn't go to every single one of them, but I saw her. Absolutely appreciate the service that she provides to us.
Yeah, I wanna second that. I hear a lot of talk about how she's very comforting, which is certainly a tough time, but, uh, she's always going out of her way to be that comforting to the family. Uh, but she does a great job. But, uh, uh, so question on the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Next item. Council to consider award of bid number 2274 for the purchase of three new unused truck weight scales for use by the York County Solid Waste Disposal Department at the landfill to the lowest response, responsive and responsible bidder, American Scale Company of Charlotte, for a total cost of 178,000, uh, 178,764.45.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Next item. Council to consider award of bid number 2269 for the purchase of one front-end skid steer loader for use by the Solid Waste Disposal Department to the second lowest bidder, Blanchard Machinery of Rock Hill, for the total cost of 50,491 dollars.
Move to approve.
Got it?
I'll second it.
Okay. Bruce, Bruce and, and... Boom. Uh, any discussion? Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Next item. Council to consider award of bid number 2249 for the Moss Justice Center Roof Replacement Project to Martin Roof, Roofing Services Incorporated of Wilkesboro, North Carolina, in the amount of $2,891,000.
Move to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
And I guess we need to point out, per Ms., I believe it was your question, one of the council members' question, Bill, that you answered, maybe publicly note the, the question, or maybe it was Mr. Johnson.
It was Mr. Johnson, Councilman Johnson's question. Basically, we were asking, being that we're looking at putting this facility possibly under referendum, would it be something that we could put off until that had happened? And, and the answer, of course, was no, due to the fact that we have ongoing leaks and we have damage that is, every time we rain, that's happening. So it's just not, it's just not the best way to do business right now, to wait.
That being said, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Next item. Consider approval, approval of a new Norfolk Southern Railroad Design Review Fee of $20,000 for the Pennies to Project 03012, Mount Gallant Road, Dave La Boulevard to Anderson Road Railroad Crossing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Next item. Consider approval of Campco Engineering Incorporated Contract Amendment Number 3 for $46,680 for engineering services to design County 10-inch sewer force main on the Tika K Gold Hill Road Connector Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Next item. Council to consider authorization of telecommunication cost audit. Next item, council to consider authorization of telecommunication cost audit for potential cost savings.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir.
Doesn't seem like there's a way to lose.
Yeah, it doesn't cost us anything.
Exactly.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Next item, consider a resolution to approve the York County Sheriff's Participation and Law Enforcement Assistant and Support Agreement with Florence County Sheriff.
Move to approve.
Second.
And Mr. Williams, would you read that into the record?
They, we've never done that before. I can, I can tell you what it says.
Well, hi, is it pretty lengthy?
Yeah.
Okay, because it wasn't in my stack.
Well, we can, yeah, if we want to.
No, that's.
Yeah, it's basically, this item and the next item provide mutual aid from the sheriff to Florence, Florence County in this item, and Darlington County in the next item. The whereas is are very similar between both, but, but it's just back and forth, doesn't cost us anything, doesn't cost them anything, something we've done year after year after year. And we just about got the whole state mutual aid now, I believe.
So any-
We do some of that, two more every year.
So any further comp-
That was just, I had a question, and I think you pretty much answered it, because these two counties are a ways away, so I assume we've already got mutual aid for all the counties that are adjoining us and in the areas, so.
Yes, no. The ones that we work close hand in hand with, we go to Florence County and work a traffic interdiction on the Interstate ninety-five, and they come here to work Interstate seventy-seven, and then the Darlington Race. We send our mountain patrol, the Darlington Race, to assist them, and whenever we need help here for anything, they come help us with, you know, crowd control, whatever.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? There being none, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. And next one, that's Mr. Williams' address. Consider a resolution to approve the York County Sheriff's Participation and Law Enforcement Assistant and Support Agreement with Darlington County Sheriff.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Next item, committee reports. Chairwoman Christie Cox, TIF Committee.
We met at four-thirty today and then went into executive session to get legal advice, and came out of that meeting with no vote, no decision, and we are continuing to receive legal advice.
Any questions for Ms. Cox? If there is none, we're at the point where we have council member comments, non-agenda, in other words, things that were not on the agenda tonight.
I have, I have something.
Yes, sir. Councilman Johnson.
Going to start a little lighter. I want to congratulate the Gold Hill Middle School girls for defeating Oak Ridge Middle School tonight. Three to two, in a hard, hard-fought battle, from what I understand. If you watched me looking at texts throughout the night, that is what I was looking for. I do, I received a phone call last week, and I, last Friday, I think, and I got back with them this morning, about a potential new ordinance that I'd like us to consider. Like us to consider a drone ordinance. I'd like to see, to see us state that you cannot fly a drone on private property without that private property owner's consent. Certainly, you could do it other places. Wouldn't apply to, to state government or local government, but it would apply to private citizens. The concern that I have heard is, I've heard from Carowinds, who had someone out at Carowinds the other day, and they're flying a drone around all of the roller coasters, and they were zipping under them and around them. And they're very afraid, they're very concerned that, long-term, that somebody's going to hit a roller coaster, hit someone in their park, it could crash into their park and injure somebody. And they'd like, and this has happened at Disney World, and Disney World got their county to, to stop it. We have the opportunity to stop it. Certainly, I don't want to stop you from flying a drone on your own property or on somebody's property who agrees to do it. But you shouldn't be allowed to basically sit in the parking lot of Cabela's and fly one over Carowinds and injure somebody. I've already talked with Mr. Kendry, and hopefully, assuming we have authority over such a thing, I would love to see an ordinance come out and be passed rather quickly as opening day at Carowinds and other public events as we heat up in the summer is quick, is quickly approaching, so.
We could actually do that under pending ordinance.
Michael, do you have any comments about that?
We are, we are looking into that. Received a call from Councilman Johnson this morning, and we'll have something to report back soon.
Thanks, sir. Any other councilman comments?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, a couple. We didn't get a chance to comment, some of us didn't get a chance to comment, on the folks who came out on the Allison Creek issue. I appreciate them coming out, and want them to know that, that I know, for me, I have been to the meetings, I am hearing you, I understand what we need to do with the density issues. Please do not give up. Please go to the meetings that are happening, voice your opinions, show up, so that we can have something done on this comprehensive plan. And you have support of council members up here who are making changes on boards and who are looking at that issue, because it is the people who elect us, and, and I'm mindful of that. And I want to say to Ryan Blank, who I think I'm saying his name right, met with him on my C-Fund money, and realized that we've gotten a lot more than we usually get. Six hundred thousand I get to use in my district, which will allow me to pay one point six miles when I have seventy miles of road that need to be paved. He was very professional, gave me all of the information I needed to know, gave me very good suggestions about the roads and, and how to go about it. But, but one thing he can't solve, and that is, how are we going to deal with it as a county? And I would like to ask that we start, as soon as we get over some of these two big issues that are coming up, that we start meeting together and coming up with ways to deal with how we're going to fund this, and to perhaps come, come out and publicly take a position on the discussions that are happening statewide as to the depositing of the roads onto us, so. And I was on my, I will say this too, I was texting, because my husband is away in Merle Beach, my seventeen-year-old is watching my two, and I was making sure that they had food, and they did a great job being at home. Courtney Cox, thank you.
I have, if I could, just one quick.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say, you know, I know I've only been on the council for a couple of months, and it's been a very heated couple of months, it's been eventful. I'd like to thank the other council members for the professionalism and for, you know, we've disagreed, but we've stayed professional with everything, I think, and I appreciate that, and I look forward to working with you in the future, hopefully with less disagreement on some things, but thank you.
Fair enough. Yes, sir, Mr. Roddy.
I just want to bring it to everyone's attention, you know, yellow folders, there's a little calendar pertaining to national county government month. There's several open days, if you, if anyone has come up with some ideas, to kind of get out into the community and promote what we do as a county for the taxpayers, for the community as well. I know me being with the Public Works, Chairman of the Public Works Committee, I made a commitment to kind of make some appearances with some recycling efforts to get out into the elementary schools, and, and I think we're working on a, a recycling challenge for, whether it's middle school or high school, to see which, which school or school district can recycle the most during the month of April. So that's just a couple of ideas that we're, we've been tossing around, I know that the, I think the Sheriff's Department's going to get out and do some things during that month. So if you guys have any, any ideas of what can be done, if what you're willing to take part in doing and promoting our county services during National County Government Month, Karen has been a, a big help with coordinating and putting some things in, in place. I even see during spring break, we got, I think the Cub Scouts, I think, one of the troops that came here, I think it was last month or the first part of this month, and presented some stuff to us. They're going to be taking a tour of the animal shelter, just things like that, kind of exposing the community to more what we're doing, what we're about as a county. So we've got several open days, several open dates. If you have any ideas, you can communicate them with Karen, and she can get it on the calendar.
Karen, you got anything to add?
I do. I am working diligently with schools to try to do some more events. Schools are very difficult to get a hold of. I'm learning, their curriculum is extremely full, and they just don't have a lot of extra time to do extra things. I have confirmed three or four, I can't think off the top of my head, students to come on April the twentieth to actually be the council member for the first person. A couple of other schools I've just taken on, I've heard from. Still working, though, I'm not giving up. PSC-
As long as we have a quorum.
Maybe Courtney Cox could do it.
Four.
She's faint.
They've been recommending their student by president, doesn't mean it has to be that, but that's just the ones that are coming, that's, that's who's coming, if they're just by president. PSC has other, a couple of other schools they're working on, and so they'll, I'll probably add some more to that. I just wanted y'all to sort of see where I was with it now and what we had going on. Y'all are welcome to attend with anybody, to any of the schools, just let me know, so I can let the council member know that a council member's going to attend with them.
Okay. Is that it? I would say that we got to get in gear now about the bond referendum and the capital projects, certainly in the next four, four weeks or so, four to five weeks.
Quickly as possible.
We don't need to wait that long. We need to-
No, 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 I'm talking about being finished.
All right.
No, it'll be part of probably our next meeting, but just sending out that reminder. Do we have a motion on executive session?
Maybe we go into executive session to receive legal advice and discuss the contractual matter.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. We'll be back in session at five till. Okay, we have one action item coming out of executive session, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the I County Attorney to opt-in to the settlement at least to give you the right to do so.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Now that we're finished, more ways than one, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, no, we're adjourned.